The zoning board appeals to order. I'd ask everyone to stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A few administrative matters to get underway before we start considering the cases on our agenda tonight. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If such an announcement is made, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit using either the south or the north doors. Do not use the elevator. Our meetings are being recorded and played on television, but our secretary, Michelle, is also taking notes for purposes of a record of the proceedings. She is not preparing a verbatim transcript. In order that the notes that she prepares can be accurate, we'd ask that whenever you come to the podium, you start by providing your name and address so that she's certain of who is speaking and so that the record accurately reflects who was speaking and what was said. We follow the items on the agenda in the order that they appear on the agenda, except in rare circumstances, none of which are applicable tonight. Extra copies of the agenda are available on the table just inside the door. Once the case is called, we ask the applicant or their representative to come to the podium, state their name and their address, raise their right hand, be sworn, and then present their case to the board. During the applicant's presentation of the case, the board members may ask questions, may engage in discussions with the applicant. After that process has all been completed and the applicant has completed their presentation and the members of the board have asked whatever questions or made whatever comments we have, then we'll open the hearing to public input. During that portion, we have three categories of input. The first category is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. And we'd ask each of you to come forward then, state your name and address. You do not need to be sworn and say what you have to say in support of the application. Then we'll ask those who wish to speak in opposition to the application to come forward. Again, state your name and address. You would not be sworn either. And state whatever you have to state for us in opposition to the application. And then we have a third category that's sort of evolved over the last year. Those who aren't sure whether they're in favor or opposed, if they just want to talk about the application or talk to us. You're welcome to come up again, state your name and address, say whatever it is that you have to say. Once that process has all been completed, then we give the applicant or their representative an opportunity to address whatever has come up during the public input portion, and then the hearing would be closed. We would then move on to the next case on our agenda. Once we've considered, had the hearings with respect to all the cases on the agenda, the board will take a recess. Once that recess is over, we'll come back and we will deliberate on each of the cases that was on the agenda in the order that they appear on the agenda and the applicant or their representative remains present. So if, for example, the first case on the agenda, the applicant or their representative has left, but the second applicant is present, we would take the second case first, work our way down through the agenda in terms of those who are present, and then go back and hear number one and work our way back down the agenda after that. If you're interested in knowing what the board's determination was with respect to a particular case and you don't wish to stay during the deliberation portion, if you get home in time, you can catch us on TV or you can call the planning and zoning office at the town hall tomorrow morning after nine, and they'll be glad to tell you what the decision was on the case. During the deliberation portion, when we meet after the recess, there is no public input. So there are no comments, no questions. Any applicants or people who stay are welcome to stay and observe the deliberation process, but it is not a participatory part of the meeting. So, having said all that, we'll now call our first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1411-1. Upon the matter of request by Susan Barrett and Mary Smith for an area variance to maintain an existing five foot four inch high fence inside yard exceeding maximum allowable height on premises 69 Anchor Terrace in an R1 residential district.
Hi, I'm Susan Barrett and I live at 69 Anchor Terrace.
And I'm Mary Smith and live at 69 Anchor Terrace.
If you could both raise your right hands, do you each swear or affirm that anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. So I have a fence that goes along the property line of the side yard.
On the north side, correct?
Huh?
It's the fence on the north side?
North side. And it is about 100 feet and it's made out of a lattice fence. So the bottom section of the fence is four feet and then the lattice brings it up to five foot four. The fence has been up for 10 years and there hasn't been any complaints or anything up to this point. Because of the lattice fence, it's difficult to cut the section. You'd have to cut the lattice off basically to make it the four foot. The section that is in question is three, eight, is that right? Eight feet sections that face the other person's, the abutting person's yard. There's a garage that's right up about maybe 10 feet on the other side and that's, it doesn't block anybody's view. There's no windows on the garage. There's nobody living in the garage except for raccoons. And so those are the sections that are in question. The other factors that come into play is the abutting yard has a pile of junk just on the other side of the fence that is higher than four feet. And you need a higher fence so you don't have to look at this pile of junk. It's a nice fence. I think it looks good. And I've been a resident of Aronacoit for 26 years and I've tried to upgrade my residence and I think I've been successful at that. And I'd like your consideration to keep the three sections of the fence with the lattice for that section.
Here's a couple of questions. First of all, the garage or the barn looking building is not yours, right?
Right. It's on the other side of the fence.
So it belongs to a neighbor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, the fence that in one of the pictures here looks like, it looks different than the rest. It's right below the picture of that garage.
Oh, that's the neighbors. My fence and his fence kind of go like this and it goes to the garage.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So that's not a picture of your fence at all?
No.
Not at that point, okay.
And the other pictures that's on that page, yeah, that's his. And then the one down below the barn, he is taking a six foot section of fence and leaned it up against his pile of junk so he doesn't have to look at it.
So he doesn't have to look at it?
Yeah.
He doesn't care if you have to look at it?
Pretty much.
And one last question, just kind of out of curiosity. When you have, you've been a resident there for 10 years, right?
Twenty-six.
Oh, resident for 26, but the fence has been up 10 years?
Right.
Would it help us all in our thinking about this to get an idea why you would all of a sudden get cited by the town for this?
Um...
It's a long time.
This gentleman baffles me all the time.
Oh, so it was a complaint?
It was a complaint.
Okay, that's, I just wondered about that because all of a sudden, after all this time, you get a notice from the town.
Yeah.
And I understand how a lot of these codes work. You can get away with a lot of things. I shouldn't use that word, "get away." You can circumvent some things as long as nobody complains.
Well, this gentleman...
Which, I'm not sure that's a good thing or a bad thing, but this time, okay.
This gentleman was there as the fence was going up because he would take down one section of his rotten fence and allow me to put up a section. And then he would take down another section and allow me to put another section up. So he was, he was there when the fence was going up and supervised it.
Can I ask a question? Are those bags of topsoil that are lined along the bottom of the fence in the one picture, are they still sitting there like that?
Yeah.
And are those your bags or his bags?
No, that's on his side.
And is there a reason that he just piled the bags there?
He thinks that somehow the rain will stay on my side of the fence if he's got it sandbagged or dirtbagged or...
Is there, has there been an issue of water flowing?
Not that I was aware of.
And there's a letter in the packet from Irv Brodrick. Is Irv that man or the person on the other side of your house?
He's the person on the other side.
Okay.
He helped put the fence up.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, he's in favor of it.
And one more, one more thing I don't quite understand. Somebody else. On the drawing of the property, there's a yellow line and then there's a red one.
And the red line is...
That's the eight foot section, right?
Yeah, those are the three eight foot sections where the red line is.
Oh, okay. So the rest of it is six or five and three quarters?
It meets code.
Right. The different color, the pink or whatever, that's the part that needs a variance. But she wanted to show the whole length of the fence. But the only portion that needs a variance is the colored, what was it, pink, you said?
Oh, okay. I didn't understand that at first. Yeah. Thanks.
Anyone have any other questions or comments? Well, just my question is the, on the request for the variance, it's showing five foot four inches, if I'm reading it correct, is that the length?
That's the height.
Height. That's the height for the request.
As opposed to four feet for that section that line goes, faces the garage.
All right, I guess, and then it shows 1.4 is the variance. One foot four inches is the variance?
Right, because...
Right, okay.
Because it can only be four.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Just one. So you didn't get a permit at the time when you had it installed?
I got a permit.
Okay. Was it inspected when it was completed?
It was inspected.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Don't need to raise your hand, just come right up to the podium and give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Tim Gray. I live at 88 Anchor Terrace. I would like to say that the fence that is there, which was put up with code, they put some trim across the top and a little cap on it. It's very attractive. Their property and how they maintain it is an asset to the neighborhood. I won't go into the liability of what she has to look at next door, but it's well done, well kept, and I would like to see it stay there. And I would like to maintain them as neighbors and take as good care of their property as they do. We work hard on ours to make it look good and we get compliments on it also.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Norma Christensen. I live at 40 Anchor Terrace and I agree with everything that Tim Gray said. There are eight of us residents from Anchor Terrace here to support Mary and Sue. All of us here are in agreement that the fence is fine the way it is. It's been there for many years. It doesn't bother anyone and we see no reason why it should be taken down. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gail Hunzberger and I live at 89 Anchor Terrace. And I just want to say Mary and Sue have impeccable, their house is impeccable, their yard is impeccable, and they're an asset to our neighborhood.
My name is Casey Blackburn. I live at 74 Anchor Terrace, directly across the street from them. And the fence is lovely. It's beautiful and I love looking at it every day and I just hope that it stays.
My name is Irv Brodrick and I live at 61 Anchor Terrace. I helped them put the fence up 10 years ago when it was put in, permit provided, and I'd like to see it stay because I really don't feel like I'm in the habit of cutting down what I put up 10 years ago. It looks good.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have to say.
I'm sorry, Irv, what number, what addresses are you?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Would anyone like to come up and talk to us about it? Seeing none, we will, does the applicant wish to address anything that came up since everybody spoke in favor? I assume that. All right, we'll move along to the next case. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1411-2. Upon the matter of request by Odic and Enterprises, Inc., acting as agent for Robert and Vera Flight for Area Variances to construct a single-family dwelling with less than required front setback and for the attached garage to exceed the maximum allowable frontage on premises 77 Eagle Rock Drive in an R1 residential district.
Good evening. My name is Greg McMahon. I'm with McMahon Leroux Associates, 822 Holt Road is our office address.
Good evening. I'm Cara Bardo-Shavitska. I am the wife of Odic Bardo-Shavitsky, owner of Odic Enterprises. Our office is at 2130 North Goodman Street.
If you'd both raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
We have prepared a site plan for the applicant who wishes to build their own residence on this vacant lot located on Eagle Rock. As part of this site plan, we've identified two variances that we would like to obtain. The first being a front setback variance. We have situated the house at 32 feet. The code calls for an average, I believe it's an average of the house on each side or no less than 30 feet. Because of the grading on this lot, this lot slopes from rear to front, we have situated it at 32 feet, which allows us to get some swales around the side and the back. As far as the character of the neighborhood, the adjoining houses, one is a corner lot and is skewed to Eagle Rock and the house on the other side is on a curve which is skewed. So with this variance, we don't believe that there's visually, that there's going to be any impact at all on the visual appearance of this house. We're within just several feet of the adjoining houses, but as I say, it does give us a little bit more room on the back to keep some rather shallow swales to direct the water which is coming again from the, from the back to the front. The second variance we're requesting is based on the homeowner's desire to have a three-car garage. Your code reads that the minimum width of a garage is 30 feet. You cannot build a three-car garage at 30 feet. Where the architectural plans of this call for 35 feet, I think, four inches. As part of the research, the applicant looked around not only this neighborhood but other R1 neighborhoods in the town and found many, many three-car garages. A list of about 18 that were, have been sold in the past 18 months and within the neighborhood area on Bay Shore, Autumn View Estates and Titus Avenue, other homes with similar three-car garages. So it, three-car garages have become, in this price category, have become somewhat the norm for new homes. And as a result, they're looking for a variance to enable them to build that three-car garage. Doing all of this within the setbacks under the R1 zoning requirements. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question about those 18 three-car garages you found. What analysis was done to compare lot size? Or was it just that you found 18 other properties that had three-car garages?
I'm a realtor with North Nagel in Aronacoit. I just simply did an MLS search within the square footage of the home, the price range that we're looking at, and what constituted two or three-car garages. And I went with 18 months of just recent sales.
So in the past 18 months...
Eighteen homes have sold with three-car garages in a price point range that we are looking to build.
Price point range and a similar square footage of the property?
Yes.
Not necessarily the lot size, though?
Um, I did not complete the whole lot size, but I didn't see any, I mean, the houses that I looked at looked as if they were all similar.
And these were all within the R1 zoning district?
Yes.
When you say they look similar, you meant from the front? They looked like they were roughly the same lot width in terms of, I mean, what did you mean when you said they looked the same?
Three-bedroom minimum, two bath, square footage within the, I did not look at lot size.
Okay.
Just for the lot that the applicant is proposing to purchase and build on, it's a 90-foot wide lot, which is a pretty typical R1 lot. Again, you know, typical for a three-car garage.
It looks to be each side of the house being centered in the lot. It's about nine feet from the side setback on both sides.
It's, it's, the side, yes, the side setbacks, let me read this right side up. The side setbacks are nine feet and I, we typically, it looks, we've kept the house probably a foot off each side off of that setback. So we've got about 10 feet from each, each side of the house to the lot line.
Donna, the side setbacks are a minimum of 10 feet or...
No, it's 10% of the width of the lot at the building, front building line.
So nine?
And a typical lot is 80 feet wide. So this is a little bit larger than an R1.
Okay. This is the driveway next door. Could be. Okay, we have a question.
Yes.
There's a lot of lines on this page and sometimes they get a little confusing, but I'm trying to figure out, what is this area right here just north of the property? Or is it part of the property?
Just, just north of the property. That's the driveway for the, that's the end of the house next door and the driveway for the house next door.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You can, you see, you see a somewhat incompleted line that's, that's got dashes around it. That would be the face, actually the face of the garage and the side of the garage next door and then the driveway going out to Eagle Rock.
So the garage you're talking about is right here, three-car?
It's, it's on the north side of the house, yes, a three-car garage. It would adjoin the garage, I mean, the garage on the house to the north and the garage on this are somewhat adjoining each other there.
And the front wall of that has a slight jog in it, right?
It does, yes. About a two-foot jog in the front wall.
It's a common sight, too. You see a lot of that.
Yeah, there'd be, two of the garage doors or the main would be at the outer portion with a single-car garage in the indented portion.
Has there been any feedback from the neighbors pro war on, on the plans?
Sign's been posted and we haven't heard anything.
You haven't gone out and talked to any?
We haven't, no. I, we have not.
The house that's on the corner doesn't face your property. It actually faces Eagle Rock Drive, right?
That's correct, yes.
So their, so their driveway is on the side of their property?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who'd like to come up and talk about it? Seeing none, we will close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next case. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1411-3. Upon the matter of request by Leah Hill for a special use permit to harbor up to four hens with chicken coop run pursuant to Section 235-70 of Town Aronacoit Code on premises 54 Russell Avenue in an R1 residential district.
Hi. You are?
I'm Leah Hill of 54 Russell Avenue.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Well, I would just like to start off by saying thank you for allowing me the opportunity this past year to have my hens at my, at my house. It's been, it's been a great year having them. I've really enjoyed them. It's been very rewarding. Each one's named with their own little personality. They're very easy to care for. They take just a few minutes in the morning to feed. They have a weekly cleaning to their coop and it's a great reason to get outside in the, in the winter. When it's cold out last winter, I made them warm oatmeal. It's very eco-friendly to have the chickens in my yard. They eat any leftover food that we may have, so there's no waste. They also eat weeds when I pull weeds from the garden in the summer. And they're just really awesome pets to have because all you have to do is give them a little bit of food and water and they give you a... little bit of food and water and they give you a delicious egg every day. Last year when I was here, there was a few concerns and I also have a few neighbors here and I, they have some concerns. One of the primary concerns last year was that rodents, potential issue with rodents. And in the past year of having my chickens, I've seen no sign of any rodents. In the past year and a half of living in my home, I've not seen any rodents, other than squirrels in the neighborhood. But there definitely does not seem to be any presence of rats or mice in the area. And again, their area, their coop is maintained regularly, so I would definitely notice if any moved in there. Another potential concern last year was of salmonella. And due to the small scale that they're, that they are, just have three chickens that are kept in a inadequate space that's kept clean, there's minimal risk for salmonella. The place where I purchased my chickens also gave them some tests and vaccinations to prove that they're healthy chickens before I even brought them home. You're actually more likely to get salmonella from eggs that you buy at Wegmans than the eggs from my backyard, actually. And I guess the other concern would be some people considering the chickens livestock and not, um...
If whoever has the cell phone.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
So the other concern would be people considering the chickens being livestock. They are just three little hens. They're not in a barn. They're in an open coop, in an open area, in a big yard. I consider them my pets. I don't feel that they are a nuisance or appalling or insulting to anybody. They're just three little birds. They're not, of course, they're not silent. What animal is? They make a little bit of clucking. They're birds, but I don't think it's obscene. It doesn't wake me up. I don't hear them. No one's ever addressed to me that it's a problem. And, you know, there's lots of dogs in the neighborhood. We hear dogs all the time. We live a couple doors down from the fire department. You know, there's lots of different noises going on in the neighborhood, lots of wild birds. But I don't particularly find that my hens are overly noisy in any way that should be a disturbance to anybody. And as I stated last year at the meeting, it's very important to me to know where my food comes from. I like to eat organically. My chickens are fed only organic food and...
I don't mean to interrupt, but if the folks out in the hall could carry on their conversation so it's not filtering in here, it's getting a little difficult to hear. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So yeah, so like I said, last year, it's really important to me to know where my food comes from. I, I don't, you guys all came to my yard, I believe. I have a large garden. I try to produce as much as I can for myself. I like to know that it doesn't have any pesticides and, you know, just like to know where everything came from. So it's very important to me to be able to get my couple of eggs I get from my three little chickens and, you know, produce food in, in my garden as well. Before I purchased my home in Aronacote last, a year and a half ago, I definitely took yard into account. I really wanted a large yard to have a garden and to have a few chickens. After looking into the town code, I felt that my yard was compliant for that and that's why I went ahead and purchased my home to have those things that I wanted that fit my needs. And, you know, since the purchase of my home, I do have my chickens. I have two dogs. I have my garden. I enjoy my yard. I like taking care of it. I feel things I've done to my house have, you know, improved the neighborhood, enhanced my property value, helping to maintain my neighbors' properties values by the improvements I've made to my home. And I'm going to continue to do so.
I talked to your neighbor to the east this afternoon who indicates that in the morning, when he's sitting on his deck drinking his coffee, it sounds like kids arguing or fighting with each other, that chickens are noisy in the morning.
I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know if it's wild birds he's hearing in the neighborhood as well. I hear his vehicles, engines revving in the driveway right next to my house every day while I'm trying to drink my coffee and relax in the morning. So I don't, I really don't feel that he can hear anything like that, especially because I can't hear it, so...
He also says that on occasion that the, they were out running wild, not wild, but running loose in the yard.
My house is fully fenced in and there were a couple nights in the summer that I let them out to graze and eat bugs and eat grass, but chickens, as soon as it gets close to dark, they put themselves to bed because they're, you know, obviously a prey animal. So a couple times over the summer, I let them out close to sunset to let them graze on bugs and grass and they put themselves away. I locked them back in and, you know, it certainly wasn't every night, just, you know, a couple nice nights that I was able to be home with them to let them do that.
I also noticed that you had fencing going across the top of the coop.
Uh-huh.
Which...
That's just for their safety, really.
Well, you said he saw a hawk there one day, so you're probably good you have the fencing there.
Oh, absolutely. I want to keep them absolutely safe, so I wouldn't leave them out unattended, ever. But being that we back up to Culver Ridge Plaza, I mean, of course, there's hawks and foxes and things like that everywhere, but, you know, being that we back up to a plaza, there really isn't an abundance of predators right there, but they are kept under close watch at all times, definitely.
You have a letter, you have two letters signed by neighbors. One of them looks to be 46, is that a next-door neighbor?
Yes, that's right next door to me on the, I believe, west?
West.
Yes.
And then you have another one, 54, or no, that's you, 65, that's across the street.
Directly across the street, yes.
Directly, okay. They seem to be fine with them. There's quite a number of neighbors that have signed a statement saying that they are unhappy with the chickens, that they make noises, they're annoying for anyone who's outside or has windows open. Mentioned there's also concerns about rodents in the neighborhood and health concerns they're concerned about as well. So there's apparently quite a few neighbors that have signed this and at least three have complained to the town formally through the complaint process that they're unhappy with the chickens. So are you out talking to your neighbors?
Um, well, the neighbor directly to my east, I got into an unrelated dispute with over the summer over a fence that he put up, so we haven't really been in much communication since. And the other two ladies that are here to complain, that did formal complaints, I've never spoken with them before. They've never let me know they thought it was noisy. The coop is 250 feet away from my house. I really can't hear anything coming from them, so I don't know how, several houses away, there's anything notable from them. You know, they're not roosters, they're just hens, they just cluck a little bit. And as far as the rodents go, I, I don't know if other neighbors have rodents in their yards. I don't. I used to live off of Monroe Avenue in an apartment. I definitely know what it's like when there are rodents around and I would definitely be able to be aware of that situation immediately if there was. And I've never seen a mouse or a rat or anything that shouldn't be there. What was the other? Oh, and then the health concerns. You know, like I said, I keep it as clean as I can. The bird, the chickens came from a reputable place, Nature Berry Farms, and I actually have an appointment set up on Thursday with East Ridge Veterinary to bring all three of my chickens, just to get a clean bill of health from all of them for you guys. But I'm, I'm pretty confident they are healthy. It just came to my knowledge today that you guys might like to see that, so I have that appointment lined up and ready to go. But just based on looks, I think they look pretty happy and healthy.
Are you still planning to keep the birds after these go? After these chickens were to die?
To die? Would I get more, do you mean?
Yes.
Uh, well, they have a life expectancy of five to six years. I guess I haven't really thought beyond that at this point. I, I love my home, but I, I really don't feel overly welcomed in the neighborhood, obviously. So I don't know, in five to six years, I might not want to still be there. So as of right now, I guess I'll see how that goes with these three chickens and providing it's, you know, still easy and rewarding, I'd like to keep them and, you know, beyond that, I, I don't know if I'll get more.
Are you going to stay with the three? Because your permit was up to four originally.
Yep, so the permit allows up to four. I do only have three and I, I have no intention of getting a fourth at this time. If you guys would prefer I not, I won't. You know, if three's better for you, that's, I'm okay with that, too. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from the board? There seemed to be another letter in the packet with a couple more neighbors that didn't think it was a problem.
Yes, in the back of everything I submitted, there were several other neighbors that signed as well, that it's not a problem. But like, like you saw in the one letter of recommendation from 46 Russell Avenue, they actually took care of my chickens for a weekend while I was away and actually found it to be pretty rewarding, too, and they had an enjoyable experience doing it.
Just so the record is clear, as part of the packet that we received with respect to this application tonight, we had a letter that was dated September 2014 that was signed by Denise Lampeau at 36 Russell Avenue, Tom Lynn Ange at 77 Russell Avenue, David at 46 Russell Avenue, and something indecipherable at 49 Russell Avenue.
Oh, that's Pete.
Hmm?
His name is Pete.
Okay. Yeah, I wouldn't, wouldn't realize that from what's on the page, but I'm no one to talk about legible writing.
Yeah.
And the complaint history was attached. We also received a letter from the residents at 46 Russell dated November 2nd and a letter from the residents at 65 Russell Avenue, Lauren and Daniel...
Driffler.
Driffler?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Alan and Kathy Gaffel. And then we received a statement in opposition that was signed by Joanne Harding and maybe Cassie Harding at 78 Russell Avenue. And both residents, Elizabeth and something at 66 Russell, Shirley and Linda at 105 Russell, Barbara Clinch at 83 Russell, and two people at 88 Russell who signed in opposition. Just so the record is clear as to what neighbors weighed in where. Any other questions or concerns from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I understand that Mr. Weatherby may have inspected this property back in July, and I was wondering if he might be able to, before we hear from other residents, if Mr. Weatherby could explain his experience?
You apparently are, have some extrasensory perception abilities that, because I was going to ask him to do that before we opened it up.
Sure. So, so on our, on our second installment of poultry cases this year, I did visit all of the ones that were on last month and this month. I would characterize this one as very, set up very similar to the ones we did see. There was nothing in particular, the way it was set up, that stood out, good or bad. We have had a number of, the one thing that is different is we have had a number of neighbor complaints in this one where we didn't on the others as much, in terms of how it's appeared, its appearance or the smell or any of the noise, it was no different than any of the ones we saw last month. And on the noise, it's really anecdotal, right? Because it could be loud when I was there and not, you know, it's really subjective to, to, you know, it seems to be a time of day thing or when they're being fed, based upon our experience last month and hearing now. But there was nothing in particular that stood out. The feed did seem to, I didn't see any feed just laying out. It was in relatively good repair, so, but I will note that there was more neighbor opposition in this particular case, so...
Any, I don't have any questions with Mr. Weatherby?
Well, actually, I'd just like to say about this particular case, you know, when it comes to something like this, you have dissension amongst the neighbors. And I am personally persuaded one way or the other by how this plays out with the neighbors because I don't want to put a stamp of approval on something that's going to be a problem for people that live there because they live there all the time, they have to come home to it, they leave in the morning to it, and whatever. On the other hand, you have a lot of neighbors who are very encouraging and are backing this one up. And I don't know if, if it's 50/50, or if it's 20/10, I don't really know. I mean, if they were all here, we could take a vote.
We have, we have, at my count, you have five, the people that signed the petition, five families against and you have five families for, based on what we have in front of us. So we probably need to hear what they have to say. Which is a perfect segue into the next portion of the meeting, unless our attorney has some legal advice for it.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, it's, it's definitely relevant to hear all the neighbor concerns and, and those are great to be taking into consideration. But we do need to keep in mind that, you know, simply, you know, generalized neighbor concerns can't be the basis to vote one way or the other. So if there are particular issues that are being brought up that, that you think need to be addressed for this particular application, if there are health, safety, wellness concerns that you think need to be addressed, then, then that's different. But just, if it's just generalized neighbor concerns that they don't think chickens are good in the town or that they're okay with chickens in the town, that can't be, you know, sort of the basis of the decision. And again, we, I know we talked about this last month, but these are specially permitted uses in the town, so the town board has deemed them, you know, generally in conformity with what the town regulations are. So you're just supposed to, you know, take into consideration any, any particulars that may be presented by this particular application and then address those accordingly, you know, in any approval that you would, if you're inclined to grant one, you know, through conditions.
Well, I have to kind of take exception because I think we do have a responsibility to the people in the neighborhood. And if we can't use anybody's influence, you, we, we don't even need to meet about this. We can just have the application, we can go over the requirements, and if they all fit, it's approved.
And I think, just to clarify, I think what counsel's saying is that if there was a specific issue being raised continually by a neighbor or neighbors, that was a specific issue as opposed to a general statement, like if they were constant complaints about noise or constant complaints about cleanliness, something specific as a, does that, so you can still take it into account, it just needs to be a more specific complaint? Does that make sense, Russ, or no?
Well, yeah, except that I can't not take it into account. It's just one of those things.
If I could, Russ, I would suggest just keep doing what you've been doing on the zoning board because I think you do a great job of balancing all the factors. But to counsel's point, just because someone doesn't like chickens isn't enough, but I think you already know that, we're looking for concrete evidence.
Right. Right, so yeah, just following up, it's definitely, everything that the neighbors say are definitely relevant considerations. And it's great because sometimes neighbor concerns can bring to light issues that you may not otherwise be aware of, but we, but we do need to focus on, yeah, the actual more, more concrete factors than just generalized, you know, opposition or concerns.
And the one thing that I noticed that wasn't included in the packet that we received that I was hoping to see, and I'm hoping that maybe during the recess we could get that, is the copy of last year's decision approving the special use permit originally. I didn't, I didn't see it in there, maybe I missed it, but...
I meant to grab it, too, and I...
Hold that right there.
That's last year's.
Yeah, it's in there.
I didn't put it in there. I have it here if you'd like me to pass it around.
That would be great. Also, I didn't... Also, I neglected to mention there was, as part of the packet, there was a letter from, uh, an attorney, Nicole Lewis Esquire from Farmington. I hadn't mentioned it before because Russell Avenue is kind of far away from Farmington, but. She's in favor. She has twelve herself, she said. All right, is, we now come to the public input portion. Those who wish to speak in favor of this application, if you would come up to the podium and state your name and address and tell us whatever you want to say in favor of the application.
My name is Nicole Lewis, I'm the one who wrote that letter for Leah. Um, I represented Leah when she purchased her house here in Arundacoit, we're also very good friends. Um, but she wanted me to come here tonight and speak on her behalf. Um, I've been kind of guiding her through the process initially when she was applied, when she applied and was approved, and then throughout the reapplication process. Um, I wanted to just spend a few minutes to focus on some of the neighbor complaints in regards to this. Um, apparently there was an inspection today, which the property had passed. Um, and I know, like was stated before, the noise of the chickens can vary throughout the day. I have some hens myself, I agree with that. Um, but I think that the inspection painted a really good picture of the general atmosphere around the chickens in Leah's yard. And also the fact that, um, being near the property, they were barely noticeable as far as odor and noise also. Um, when they were near seventy-eight Russell, again, they couldn't hear the chickens, they couldn't smell the chickens. Um, it's just very concerning to me that there are certain neighbors on this street that their complaints seem to be in absolutely direct opposition to what was found in the inspection report. And I, I just think there is something a little deeper going on here besides chickens. Um, but that's just the impression that I'd gotten, um, from some of these allegations. I also find it kind of striking too that Leah's had the chickens in her yard, the same three hens, in the same exact coop, same exact location since July of twenty thirteen. Um, the noise complaints came all in in September of this year. So if these neighbors had such issues, um, with the noise of the chickens as they allege, I don't understand why they waited well over a year to complain about it. Um, also that they never complained during the summer months when people are more likely to be outside, you can hear them more, your windows are open as was talking about in their petition. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I think Leah is an asset to her neighborhood, she's done a lot to her house, she's a first-time homeowner, and I wouldn't want to see her have to give up her hens because there's a few people on the street that have some arbitrary kind of baseless reasons that they don't want to keep them. And that's all I can say. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application?
Hello, my name is Brian Talinger, I live at sixty-six Russell Avenue. I've been there for thirty-eight years. It's been a good community there for a long time, so I enjoy it. But my question is, chickens are making noise, and they have been out of the cage without anybody around. They go in the house and they le- leave them out there in the yard. I mean, if that's watching them, uh, something's wrong in the picture. But, and, uh, is also I'm worried about the resale of my house because sooner or later I'm getting out of here. But I don't know when yet. But I've been there and, uh, I just don't like the way things are going now. But the chickens are, they are making a lot of noise. Whether people say they're not, or it's not my problem.
Can I ask you a question? When you say they're left out in the yard, is it front yard, back, is it in the back?
Backyard, in the fenced-in area, but not in their coop area.
Okay, but they're not running loose in the neighborhood?
No, 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 there's fence lines along there, but. My, I thought when they first allowed these chickens in, they were supposed to be kept in a coop, in a pen area. And now they got to run in the yard. And the fences are old. Fences are old, so if there's holes in the fence, they come over my yard, I don't know what's gonna happen. And these are farm animals, they should be out on the farm.
Could you talk a little more about the noise? What time of day do you hear it?
Well, it's throughout, not totally throughout the day, but in the morning, six to eight. It, and it sounds like kids are up there behind the plaza, is what it sounds like, arguing or, and so I go up there and see, but it's not, it's, uh, chickens that are doing this.
What do you mean you go up there and see? You walk to the back?
I walk my yard.
Just walk the yard?
Yeah. I do that every day for exercise. So I, I'm search, searching my yard all the time too.
You're, you're on the same side of the street, right?
Right next door, yes.
Right next door to the house?
Um, my name is Elizabeth Talinger, I also live at sixty-six Russell. Um, I've been there since I, my mid twenties. Um, we bought the house, it was in a commercial area, but it is deemed residential and it doesn't have that feel of late. Um, I know, I appreciate organic and going green, but, um, next thing, will a cow come in, a goat, a lamb? Because we want all of our food to be grown on our premises. And my husband is right about the squealing. It, it is a child, it sounds like a child squealing, cause we spend almost all summer outside, we don't have air conditioning in our home. We enjoy our deck and our yard, we're out there, hot tub, pool. And I do spend a lot of time on the deck. I have my TV going, I put it out there, watch the, you know, baseball games and stuff, and I've heard it even over my television. And I, it sounded like a child screaming and squealing to the point where he goes up, he looks, you know, cause we're concerned if there's something in the back there. It's not all the time, it's not, you know, like Leah said, chickens do put themselves to bed at night, so it's not like it's keeping us up, but there is a noise factor. I feel if I wanted to live on a farm forty years ago, we would have moved to a farm. I love Arundacoit because we were, we're twenty minutes from anywhere in the county. We've always taken good care of our home, our property, and we've always had really good neighbors, and we've never had any problems until the last couple of years. And when the point came across, um, why didn't someone complain about it last year? We were still out on our deck, yes, last year, they were little itsy-bitsy chicks. And I even took my grandchildren over there when they first moved in, and they, you know, would touch the little chicks. And they have become big chickens now, and hens that make noise. So there's no exaggeration in the noise, it's not constant, I'm not saying that. And it's not anything that we can't live through. But my point is, if it's chickens now, is it gonna be a cow, a pig, a horse in the future? I don't, I don't know what direction Arundacoit's moving in with allowing farm animals. To me, it's not a pet. They're not pets, they're not in your house, they're not like your dog or your cat or a bird that you have caged in the house.
Out of curiosity, when she first applied for it a year or so ago, were you, did you come to the meeting at all?
No, we, we were good neighbors and we, she just moved in and she was passionate about it, and we thought, well, we'll give it a try, but I, I regret.
At one point?
Well, not support it, but we were trying to be, we, we've never caused any rifts anywhere in the town or with our neighbors. We, we've been there, I mean, we have a good reputation. And our children, you know, have good reputations too. And they've been lifelong residents of Arundacoit as well. And, you know, we were just, we were, we tried it out, you know, and after a year, I, I'm not happy with it.
Since the question came up, I just wanted to read so that everyone is aware of what section two thirty-five seventy of the Arundacoit Town Court Code provides, which is the section of the town ordinance that we're, uh, dealing with in this case. Paragraph A, it says that in any residential district, no lot may be used or occupied and no structure may be erected, maintained, or used for the raising, harboring, or housing of pigeons, swine, goats, rabbits, cows, horses, poultry, foxes, mink, skunks, or any fur-bearing animals, unless application is made to and a special use permit is granted by the Board of Appeals, subject to such terms and conditions as may be appropriate in the particular case and in conformity with the following subsection, which is B. The Board may consider, where it is material in each case and among the other relevant factors, any danger to neighboring property, noise or offensive emission of odors or fumes, and any detriment to the health, safety, morals, or the general welfare of the community, and whether such use is appropriate to the particular location. Notwithstanding the foregoing, nothing herein contains shall prohibit the raising or harboring of domestic animals or poultry on any farm within the town of Arundacoit as defined in this chapter. So that's the, that's the section that we're dealing with. So when you raised the issue of cows or horses, I was thinking, well, that's probably not really thing. But, uh, to answer your question, yes, cows, horses, swine, goats, minks, all come under section two thirty-five seventy.
If I can ask a couple more questions. Um, if we were to grant this application and allow the chickens for another year, would you have a preference that we limited it to two as opposed to three? And that we put a condition on it that they would have to stay in the pen?
I would say they would have to stay in the pen, but I don't, I don't think the number is relevant. You know, I, I don't know which ones are noisy or which ones aren't. And, you know, to me, I, I don't feel, I don't see that they're pets, but, you know, that's my, they're not, I mean, I know she named them and, you know, but a pet is something that you spend time with, you have in your home. And like she said, she goes up there in the morning and maybe once at night. And last winter, I was even thinking when it was so cold, I, I wonder if they're gonna survive, you know? It's, cause they were little at that point. But this summer, I've really noticed the noise factor more than anything. And then when they're grazing in the yard, free-ranging, I, it just, it doesn't go with our town. You know, we have big lots on Russell Avenue.
When they're loose in the yard, are they making noise generally?
No, no.
So they're just loose in the yard, walking around and picking it?
It just reminds me of being at my uncle's farm.
Okay.
And, you know, and I, I mean, it wasn't an unpleasant feeling at my uncle's farm, but it, it's still, if I want to go to the farm, I'll get in my car and go to Spencerport and visit my uncle.
Cause I read it, I, I read over the, um, the decision from July twenty thirteen, and there was no requirement that they be kept in the fenced-in coop area. I mean, as lo- obviously.
See, that was my, uh, first impression that it was supposed to be kept in the coop when I first was told all about this.
When we signed for it, we, you know.
I, I think they spend most, I think what was represented to us that they would spend most, if not all, of their time in the coop. And from what I hear you saying, I think that's the case, right? Most of the time they're in the coop?
Well, now they are, yeah. For some reason, they haven't been letting them out.
Was there a time when they were out regularly?
They were out in the summer, a couple, every other day or whatever.
For how long?
Mostly weekends.
Uh, half an hour, hour?
Okay.
Every other day maybe, but sometimes they're not out there with them either.
Okay. Were, were the chickens ever in your yard?
No.
Or anyone else's yard that you're aware of?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
All right, we're set.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application?
Hi, I'm Joanne Harding and I live at seventy-eight Russell Avenue. Um, I just want to say, there's a few things. They say they can't hear it, that it made it sound like I was making it up, but I do have to tell you one thing. First of all, I'm totally deaf in this area. So I'm sitting outside, reading my book with legends on the radio, and I could hear them to so bad that I thought, what the hell? Like Brian said, I thought it was kids. And I told Brian, he said, no, Joanne, those are the chickens. That's when I wrote my letter to both, um, Mr. Bellow and Mr. Weatherby about it, and that was at the end of June. So it wasn't in September or the last couple of day, weeks that anybody complained about this. I made that complaint back in June. And I had heard it every time I go out in my backyard to let my dog in. My dog doesn't bark, I gotta tell you that much. So I do, he just comes in anyway, but that's it, you're there. My neighbor on the other side of me, at eighty-eight, um, Russell Avenue, he goes out and has a cigarette every morning at six o'clock in the morning, and that's all he hears is the chickens making all kinds of noise. So he told me, he said, were they kids and out at six? I said, no, the chickens. He said, well, that's what he thought. I had a garage sale in August, set up at eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning. People came early and we could hear them, and they kept asking me what that noise was. And I said, oh, they're my chick, the chickens that are down, two doors down. And they go, you gotta be kidding, we don't have chickens in Arundacoit. So there are a lot of residents in the town of Arundacoit that doesn't realize that there are certain properties that have chickens. I know that the, the land where we are, my father-in-law built this house back in nineteen forty-one. My mother bought the house in nineteen seventy-four and lived there for twenty-six years. I moved into the house in two thousand and one after my mother died, with my husband, who died four months later. They never had any of this stuff. I'm a long time, a forty-year resident, my husband was a sixty-one-year resident. This is a residential area. People moved to Arundacoit from the city back in the sixties and the fifties to be out of the city into a nice area. If somebody comes to buy, want to buy my house and I have to tell them that there are chickens down the street, they're gonna turn around and walk away. They're not gonna want to do this. And I've talked to a couple of realtors about it, and it is not a good selling point, any way, shape, form, or manner. Very nervous about talking, anyway. Uh, I just, I, I just don't feel, you know, that this is a right thing. We are a small town, we are not Penfield, we are not Brighton, Henrietta, Greece, who have full lots where maybe they could stick a chicken coop and nobody's gonna see them or a run. We're all on top of each other. There is no place in Arundacoit, except maybe on Titus Avenue or Wambach's, that has the land to be able to do this. So that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to come up and talk to us about it? Does the applicant wish to address any of the comments that were made during the public hearing?
All right, I just made a couple notes here. Um, I'm not gonna come back next year and ask for a cow or a pig or anything, I'm content with my chickens. Um, as far as letting them out, like, like I said, a couple nights in the summer, a couple, maybe three nights a week, I'd let them out for maybe an hour, half an hour. I was never told that that's something I wasn't supposed to do. If that is something I'm not supposed to do, I will stop doing it completely. Um, I feel that it was done under supervision because I was home. I might not have been outside with them the entire time, but I made sure that they were watched. Um, and, you know, I, it, it's frustrating to feel like I'm like being watched too in my own home, like in my own yard. Um, we all have big yards, we wanna enjoy them. Um, our, my yard is fully fenced in, I walk my yard regularly too. There are no holes in the fence. My chickens, I don't think could get out over to anyone else's yards. Um, I have two dogs as well, they remain in my yard too. Um, let's see, oh, as far as resale value, um, since I moved into my home, I've literally done nothing but like continue to improve my home. I just put in a brand-new, updated bathroom. Um, so if, I, I mean, if anything, I'm helping raise my property value, which is helping continue to keep others' property values, I think as well. Um, in addition to, uh, landscaping and, and other various things I've done to my home, um, I've added central air, um, some nice things to add value. Um, and, you know, again, they are my pets. Um, I, maybe people have different definitions of pets. Um, I do like to spend time with them, I have a hammock in the back right neck, near them. I don't know if you guys saw that? In the summer, when I had free time, I would often spend my time in the hammock, hanging out with them. Um, I, I didn't find any of their noise to be particularly offensive, I would. I would hang out back there with them. I actually do kind of spend time with them. And, what else? Oh, and, and I mean, as far as noise goes, I mean, they are birds. There are wild birds in the neighborhood too. There is a bird that squawks outside of my bedroom window every day, and it's not my chickens, it's just a wild bird. But I don't care because it's nature, and I like animals and birds and, you know, it, it happens. I like the sounds of nature, especially in the morning. People can hear it in the morning more because the world is kind of quieter at that time. You know, I mean, so the noise is, is really debatable. And then, you know, I don't wanna, I hate to be, you know, I don't want to be rude or anything, but, you know, then my neighbor next door, directly to me, 66, is complaining about the noise of the chickens and not being able to enjoy their coffee, but what about when it's my day off and I'm trying to enjoy my yard, and he's in the backyard revving his engines, running practically a mechanic shop out of his backyard? I mean, it was said like several times that this is a residential neighborhood, but why can cars be driven back and forth on the lawn all the time, most days in the summer, revving engines, working on cars in the backyard? Near my garden, there's car fumes near my garden, near my chickens? Like, I never would have complained about that. I just, I do what I, you know, I want to enjoy my little world and my little yard. I want everyone else to be able to do that too. But, I mean, I think a car revving next to me when I'm trying to enjoy my yard is far more a nuisance and annoying than a couple little birds clucking around. And, you know, as far as hearing it further down the street, I, I truly find that hard to believe. I can hardly hear them. And there are so many dogs in the neighborhood too. I love dogs, again, I would never complain, but there are dogs barking in the neighborhood constantly. And it, I don't know exactly what dogs are coming from where, but it does definitely sound like 78 Russell. It does sound like there's a dog coming from there. I could be mistaken. I really don't care though, I love dogs, I really do. But, you know, everyone has different things in their, in their homes. They have different animals, different pets, different vehicles that they choose to enjoy. And, you know, I wish we could all just enjoy our, our things together and, you know, let people live the way they want to live. And I think I covered pretty much everything.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We will close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next case on our agenda. And before we begin with this case, this case is a little different than the other cases that we normally have. Excuse me, where the hearing is closed, so if we want to have a conversation, if you do it outside, so we can move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a little different than what we normally consider. This is, I think, in the time that I've been on the board, I can recall, I think, two other occasions on which we've been asked to consider whether or not an interpretation that's been made of the provisions of the town code is, that's been objected to by either a property owner or an adjoining property owner, whether or not the town's interpretation is correct. And that's another function that this board serves, which is as an appeal from determinations made by the town. In this instance, it's a different kind of thing, and I'll have our attorney explain to us what it is that we're being called upon to do in this case as opposed to some of the others.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. So, yeah, this is a little bit different. What we have here is an interpretation by the town fire marshal, Greg Merrick, and his interpretation was to determine the current use of the property located at 2841 Culver Road, and whether that use was permitted under the town code. This is in R1 district, and as you know, each district has specific uses that are permitted, specially permitted, and if it's not listed in either of those categories, the use is prohibited and requires a use variance from this board for it to take place. So the interpretation that Mr. Merrick had issued was that the subject property, the business that's being run at the subject property, was not being run as a church or a place of religious worship, which is a defined term under the code, but instead more akin to a funeral home. And I'm gonna read the definition of church or religious place of worship as it's set forth in the Arundic quite town code, so we all have that in mind going forward. So a church or religious place of worship is "an institution that people regularly attend to participate in or hold religious services, meetings, and other activities. The term church shall not carry a secular connotation and shall include buildings in which the religious services of any denomination are held." So what your task is here today is to determine whether or not Mr. Merrick's interpretation was accurate, whether or not he had a reasonable basis for finding that the business that's currently being run at 2841 Culver Road is not a church or religious place of worship. There's also some discussion about, you know, whether the property's being run as a funeral home, both in his interpretation and in the applicant's papers. But keep in mind, when you're listening to both sides tonight, that, you know, Mr. Merrick doesn't have to prove that the property is in fact being used as a funeral home, and the applicant on the flip side does not have to prove that it's not being used as a funeral home. Whether or not the property is a funeral home is sort of an ancillary issue. What the real question is, is whether or not it's being used as a church or religious place of worship. And if the answer to that is yes, then it is a permitted use in the R1 district and can continue. If the answer is no, it's not being used as a church or religious place of worship, whether it's a funeral home or something else that's undefined in the code, some special use that hasn't really been contemplated. If it's not a church or religious place of worship, regardless of what it is, it's not permitted in this district and would require a use variance from this board.
In the letter that we received from the Property Owners Council, there's reference to a definition in Public Health Law, Section 3400 subdivision G. Is that an accurate definition?
Of funeral home?
Yes.
Uh, yes, I, I checked the citations, and there's, there, those are inaccuracies. Are there, those are all, there are no inaccuracies in any of the citations. But again, the focus should be whether or not we're talking about a church or religious place of worship. It could be neither a church or religious place of worship nor a funeral home, but that would require then a use variance nonetheless from this board.
Now, I just want to be clear, our task in doing this, what is the standard of our review of the determination by the fire marshal? Because my understanding is that there's a certain, we can't just completely reassess what he's, what the fire marshal has done. We have to give some, I guess, credibility or credence to his determination, that there's a certain standard that we have to apply when deciding whether or not we're going to overturn him?
Yes, i-if you think that his, that there is a reasonable basis in his interpretation based on the facts that you, that you hear, if you think that he was reasonable in determining that the use is in compliance, or, or, I'm sorry, that the use is not within the definition under the code, then you would have to uphold that.
So if we find that there is a reasonable basis for his determination, we need to uphold it. If we find that there is no reasonable basis for his determination, then we have to overturn it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are we required to find that there's no reasonable basis for his determination to conclude that the applicant has established that the activity at the premises satisfies the definition of place of worship, or whatever the title is that's given in the town code? In other words, if the applicant puts in information, and Mr. Merrick gives us information, and I were to conclude at the end of it that the activities that are taking place there are in accordance with the definition, does that mean I'm saying that there was no reasonable basis for Mr. Merrick to conclude otherwise?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
So, yeah, if, if your opinion is that they have met their burden of showing that they are a church or religious place of worship?
So the applicant has the burden of demonstrating that it is a place of worship, and the fire marshal has concluded that it's not?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Now I think I'm clear.
I think that makes it clear.
Alright. That's right, we never did that, yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1408-3. Upon the matter of request by Woods Oviet Gilman LLP, acting as agent for DM Williams Funeral Home, Inc. to appeal the fire marshal's interpretations of occupancy use pursuant to section 235-101 of the Town of Arundic quite Code and section 267-A of the New York Town Law on premises 2841 Culver Road in an R1 residential district.
And before we get underway, I see Mr. Merrick's at the podium, but it seems to me that the application is being made by the property owner. So it would seem to me that, excuse me, whoops, that's alright, that the property owner should proceed first to explain why they believe that it is a house of worship as defined in the town code, and then Mr. Merrick can provide his rationale in determining that it isn't. And then we would open it up to any public input. Excuse me, one second, is public input appropriate on this kind of?
It's, it's a public hearing.
Okay, so yes, we'll have public input, same three categories as before, and then we'll give, after the public input, I'll give Mr. Merrick an opportunity to respond to that, and then the applicant can get the last word just like it's done in court proceedings. But before, for ease purpose, anyone who's going to be offering testimony on behalf of the applicant, if you could come forward so that you can be identified and sworn.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Brennan. I live at 36 Lawton Street from law firm Woods Oviet Gilman, and I'm here today on behalf of the applicant.
And the applicant is next to you, I believe?
The, the owner of the applicant.
The owner of the applicant, okay.
My name is Denise Williams, 2841 Culver Road, Williams Interfaith Chapel.
Ms. Williams, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I need to be sworn in, Mr. Chairman?
You're not offering testimony, you're representing the applicant and advocating on behalf of the applicant, so no, you're not a witness, you're an advocate.
I've actually been to the property, and I, and I did want to offer sort of my firsthand experience having, having viewed it in person.
Alright, then.
That's okay.
Yep, then raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. We'll swear anyone who'd like to be sworn. Go ahead.
Again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Chairman. I'm here today on behalf of DM Williams Funeral Home, Inc., and here with me today is Denise Williams. She owns DM Williams Funeral Homes, and she also owns the property in question, which is the Williams Interfaith Chapel. This is a separate property that's down the street from DM Williams Funeral Homes, and it's been offered to the public as a place of religious worship. So as, as your counsel mentioned to you today, this is our appeal of the determination of the town that this property is not being used as a place of religious worship. And I'd like to start out by telling you a bit about the property and how Ms. Williams has used it and the investment that she's made in your community. Now, Ms. Williams leased this property from the Turkish Society of Rochester in 2011. This property has, has always been used as a church or a place of worship since it was purchased by the Turkish Society of Rochester, and I believe in the 1970s, it's been used by several different denominations as a church, as a religious school. And now it's being used by Ms. Williams Company as an interfaith chapel that's really open to, to all denominations. But it has a specific purpose, and that's for funerals and wakes. And funerals and wakes really are one of the most important life events, and really one of the few life events that most people turn to religion for. You know, maybe funerals and weddings would be the two main life events that people would use, would, would turn to religion for as, as, you know, participation in organized religion has declined. But these are two important events that, that people will still look to religion for. So this is a really, it's not just a religious use, it's an important religious use that's open to many different denominations and many different parts of our community. And the point of this interfaith chapel is for people or for religious organizations that don't otherwise have the space or the capacity to, to hold an event like this. So it's been, it's been used by churches themselves who don't have enough space, can't hold enough people in their churches, will, will use this for a particularly large event. But it's also used by, by families of many different religions to hold services, either the funeral or the wake or both, in a large space. All of these services, both the funerals and the wakes, have a strong religious component. And what I mean by that is every single one of them, since Ms. Williams opened this interfaith chapel, every single one of these events has had an element of prayer. There's always an element of prayer. There is almost also always going to be a scripture reading. And in fact, all of these ceremonies, all of these events, are going to be led by a member of the clergy, with whatever religion, whatever denomination is using the chapel. It's always going to be officiated by a member of the clergy. In fact, Ms. Williams does not organize these events, she's not controlling the events. She always leaves that to a member of the clergy, and that's because these are inherently religious ceremonies. And they're very important, as I'm sure all of you are well aware. They're very important to the people that, that go, to the families, to the friends of, of the deceased. So this is an important moment in someone's life, and not just for people that are very religious, but also for people that don't necessarily go to church every weekend, but who find themselves in a very difficult time, and who, while they wouldn't ordinarily turn to religion at this point in their lives, most of us do. So this, this interfaith chapel, it hosts exclusively, or almost exclusively, funerals and wakes. There have also been some other religious events. They've had a couple gospel concerts there. They used to host meetings for Narcotics Anonymous groups. They no longer do that. So the backstory here is that after she leased the property, she began a renovation, and this is, this is not a minor renovation. Ms. Williams, through her company, has invested over $100,000 in this property. And, and I've visited the property, it looks great, and it looks like a church. The chapel is a large room, gathering space.
Do you have any photographs of the property?
Uh, we do have photographs of the property.
Wonderful, can you circulate those? Because they weren't part of any of the materials that I saw, and I'd really like, be interested in seeing what the property looks like on the inside?
Absolutely. So what I have here, and I'll circulate, if you guys want to pass these around, there's numerous photographs of the chapel, and I can sort of explain to you what you're looking at. The first floor of the building is the, the main chapel room, so this is a, a large, open space that has seating for hundreds of people, just like you'd expect to find in a church or any other religious place of worship. There are pews. That's what Ms. Williams, through her company, installed when she purchased the property. There's also a pulpit at the front for giving, leading a prayer, which is almost always done by a member of the clergy, or also leading a, a reading of religious scripture. Can you explain that one? Is that in the cover? Just a moment.
Looks a lot better in sight.
So this photograph, looks like a blanket on top of it. That is a casket that's underneath that blanket. It's part of their moving in. So the first floor, where you can see in the pictures, there's clearly church pews.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? What was that in the picture?
There's a blanket with a casket underneath it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is the casket occupied in the photograph?
I don't know, but I would presume that it is. No, I guess it's... So the first floor is a large gathering space that's used almost exclusively for funerals and for wakes. In the basement area, there is a large, open space. There is with seating. And there is also a kitchen that's open.
And the tables?
And there's tables, right. So Ms. Williams does not use that first floor any longer. She did at one point, but she was not given a certificate of occupancy for the town. So she doesn't use that space, but...
The basement space?
The basement space, I apologize. She is still using the first floor. So she essentially completed all of these renovations, you know, over $100,000 in renovations at the request of the town in order to obtain a certificate of occupancy. And one of the first, the first letter that she got from the Fire Marshal, and this letter is dated August 28, 2013. And it's referenced in our letter that we provided to the board, notes that, and I'm quoting from the letter, "Currently, it is our understanding, this building is being used by DM Williams Funeral Home as a place of worship for funerals of families that do not belong to a church." And that is exactly how the property was being used. And that's how the property currently is being used. Less than a year later, on April 10, 2014, DM Williams Funeral Homes received a second letter from the Fire Marshal outlining a change in position. And this change in position was never explained. There were never any changes in the actual use of the property. But based on this letter, the town's position changed that the property was no longer being used as a place of worship for funerals of families that did not belong to a church, but now it was being used as a funeral home. And there's several very important problems with that. And I'll get the first one out of the way quickly. This property is not, nor could it ever be used, as a funeral home. Funeral home has a very specific meaning and is a regulated and licensed profession. It's regulated by the Department of Health. And there are very specific requirements for funeral homes. And these are because there's important health implications to having the preparation of cadavers on a property. That's how New York State defines funeral home. Not as a place just where you have funerals, but as a place where you prepare cadavers for viewing or for interment. And there are specific health code requirements that must be met. The property owner must be licensed by the Department of Health to carry out those activities on premises. There are also regulations that go directly to the property itself. And that's what's most important here. The Department of Health and the state of New York will not allow a funeral home to exist in a building that has a kitchen. They don't want food being prepared in the same place that bodies are being prepared. In fact, there cannot be any space in the building whatsoever that is being held out as used for consumption of food, not just for preparation of food. The other important thing that all funeral homes in New York must have is a space for the preparation of cadavers for interment. And those, you know, along with that, there's some important health and safety regulations as well. They're very technical about how the water has to be treated, the plumbing, specific things that they must have in that room.
Once a cadaver is prepared for viewing or interment, are there any regulations on where the cadaver can be and how long it can be in any particular location before it's interred?
I'm not aware that there are. There may be. But that's not necessarily going to change the use of the property. So the important regulations here...
No, no, no. My question is that the funeral home, as the definition that I understand, is where the body is prepared. So once the body is prepared and it's placed in a casket, that casket can be taken to any location and left for any period of time. My question is, are there any regulations about that? Can you pull the casket in the living room of someone's home and leave it there for two or three days before you take it and inter it? Can you take it to a public place and leave it on display there for several days before it's intered? Are there any, are there regulations about that? Or once it's been prepared and the preparation process is completed, is it then an unregulated item?
Yes, there are some regulations. A human body cannot be viewable by the public. You cannot have a human body at a window. If someone's driving by, they should not be able to see that human body. I have had home...
The body or the casket that it's in?
The body.
Okay, so if it's a closed casket?
If it's a closed casket and it's at a window, you can't see a body.
Okay.
That's a regulation.
Okay.
I have had home visitations. It's popular with the Hispanic community. They would like the wake at their house. I have taken casketed bodies to homes. And it's that family's discretion if they want a wake for an hour or two days. That's up to them. So as long as that body cannot be seen through a window, it still has to be private. So there are some regulations on where a body can be seen and viewed. But you can take a body anywhere.
So you could have an uncasketed body in a residence? As long as you can't see it through a window?
You can take an uncasketed body into a residence if the family decides they want a home visit without a casket. You don't have to buy a casket. You don't have to rent a casket. You can take their body to the house and lay the body on the couch.
Didn't know that. All right.
Those were questions I was actually going to ask. Those are good questions.
You know, I think the important distinction here is that the Town of Aronakoi Code does not define funeral home. So when we're looking for a definition of funeral home, we can look to state law. And state law does define that term. And it regulates which, what buildings can be used as a funeral home. A building that has a kitchen cannot be used as a funeral home. And a building that does not have a suitable room for the preparation and interment of cadavers cannot be used as a funeral home. Ms. Williams' property, the Interfaith Chapel, has a kitchen and does not have a room for the interment of bodies. And so it therefore cannot be a funeral home under state law. Now, again, the Town of Aronakoi's definition, or the Town of Aronakoi's code does not have a definition of funeral home.
But it does have the definition that our counsel read earlier that I want to read again. And I want to ask you a couple of questions about that definition for church or place of religious worship, defined as an institution that people regularly attend to participate in or hold religious services, meetings, and other activities. What is your position on what the term regularly means?
That the property is primarily used for this purpose, that it's regularly used for this purpose. And we absolutely meet that definition.
So like ordinary and customary? Similar to that?
Yes, that's a fine definition.
All right, not with any specific timeframe? Doesn't have to be weekly, monthly, yearly? Anything like that?
Not necessarily. I mean, in some type of regular intervals. But with this property, it's only used for that purpose. And Ms. Williams is having funerals and wakes, these religious services in this property as often as she can. For as much demand as there is out there for these services, she's going to provide that. It's not being used for other purposes.
Now, you mentioned that NA used to hold meetings there, but they don't anymore. Was that because of any action on the part of the town? Or was that because NA decided they didn't want to use that facility?
Well, my understanding is that there's no longer is a certificate of occupancy for that basement level. And the NA meetings, which were not that frequent, this never was, you know, a major use of the property, were being done in the basement portion anyways, which is no longer available for use because there's no certificate of occupancy.
Is that tied into this issue that's in front of us tonight? That there's not a certificate of occupancy because the property's not being viewed as being used as a church or place of religious worship? Or is there some other reason that the basement is not yet certified for occupancy?
Well, there were some specific safety issues with the basement, which DM Williams Funeral Homes has worked on correcting. And they anticipate working with the town even more to address any safety building code issues. We absolutely will work with the town to address those issues. But we can't get to that point until we've determined, until we've satisfied this use of the property question. Because it's impossible for them to move forward and to continue to offer these religious, offer this property for religious services when it's unclear whether they're even allowed to do that.
Now, you mentioned gospel concerts as having been conducted in this property at one point. A couple times, I think you said. Besides wakes, funerals, and gospel concerts, and there was some use by NA, has there been any other use of this building?
No, no. And the gospel...
Any other activities that have taken place there?
No. And the gospel concerts mean there was, I believe there were a couple of them in the years that since she's taken her lease of the building. It's almost 99%, almost entirely wakes and funerals. And almost all of those are going to be officiated by members of the clergy. And all of them, in fact, have prayer or possibly and reading of scripture as a part of the services.
Now, you've mentioned funerals and you've mentioned wakes. Can you define? I'm gathering from the limited background that I have and what was in the materials that the funeral is a organized service that would be conducted in the wake is more a celebration that might be accompanied by food and some form of nourishment and beverages?
I think particularly with the customers of DM Williams Funeral Home, that the distinction is going to be more based on the time of day that the services are conducted, where the wake is traditionally going to be held the night before the funeral. And so it's really more about giving the opportunity for more people from the community to attend the event.
So what takes place in a wake?
It's, for the most part, it's going to be a greeting of family members, friends. There's going to be a component of prayer. And there may also be a component of reading of scripture. And in a lot of ways, that's similar to what goes on at the funeral. One of the main distinctions is going to be the time of day.
Time of day? I've heard tell, you hear the expression about an Irish wake being a particular class of wake.
Haven't heard that expression before.
I can only recall my grandfather's Irish funeral. And I'm wondering, I think the wake came afterwards. I don't know. But in any event, perhaps Ms. Williams can elaborate on what the distinction is between a wake and a funeral? Is it just the timing of it?
Not necessarily. We've moved toward a tradition of having wakes prior to funerals, all one-day service. Sometimes it's economics, sometimes it's emotion. Families don't want to go two days. For families that have maintained tradition, that have the wake the evening before, we do not have food. I can probably count in the past three years, we may have had coffee upstairs for a wake. But it's not often that we have food. It's to greet the family, express your condolences. And generally, I would, again, during that service, we kind of close down the viewing portion of the wake and allow clergy to come up. And it's, sometimes we call it mini-service. During a funeral, there is a space for remarks on a program. And it can be lengthy if the microphone is open on the day of the funeral for remarks. So the evening prior, when there's a wake, often the clergy will open the floor for those that would like to have remarks that would not have an opportunity to say anything at the funeral. And then that clergy, again, would do a scripture, maybe a few words of comfort and close out in prayer. And that's tradition with an evening wake.
Now, does it make a difference whether or not the body is in a casket or whether the body's been cremated and the remains are in an urn? Same kind of activity?
Same type of activity. It's often, Uh, it's often, well, it'll say in the paper, visitation five to eight, and there's no body there at all. There's an urn, or there might not be an urn, there might be a picture. Uh, sometimes people come with an expectation that they may see a body in a casket for, because it says visitation. But it's just a common term. Visitation means come and, uh, see the family and be with them for that evening. So a body does not have to be present for a wake, no.
And does-
The newspaper notice does not decipher if a body is there or not.
And, and, and I know that, uh, in many funeral homes, the visitation takes place right in the, in the funeral home, is, are there regulations that require that?
That you have a wake at a funeral home?
That, no, that the visitation take place in the funeral home.
No, you can have a visitation anywhere.
And I guess, Mr. Chairman, I just have one question actually on that point. Um, Ms. Williams, you're, you own a funeral home just a few doors south of this, this venue, correct?
Right.
Would you care, this venue that we're talking about today is significantly larger than your funeral home down the road, correct?
Yes.
Have you ever held an event at this funeral home that we're talking, well, at, well, you've been calling it a funeral home or a place where you hold wakes? Um, have you ever held an event of that type at this venue? Because your business down the street was not big enough to hold it?
Only if it's requested. I've had very large wakes right at my funeral home. If a family asks, it's all been word of mouth. I have not advertised this space as available. Uh, if someone comes to a service, they'll say, I went to a service down the street, do you know how we can use that? Just so happens, yes, that's our space. I don't advertise that. Uh, I do have wakes and funerals in my funeral home.
And so that leads me to another question. If we were to agree with your interpretation and determine that the activities that you're conducting at the property satisfy the definition of church or place of religious worship, is it then your intention to publicize that, the availability of that for those kinds of activities? Or is it still going to be, I mean, would you list it as an interfaith chapel? I see that you've, in some of the materials, it was referenced as interfaith chapel in some of the, uh, death announcements that were attached to the materials. Would that be your intention to make it known that this was available then for that kind of activity?
There will be no change in the use of this property.
That wasn't, that wasn't my question.
I will not advertise it as, uh, you can come here and do anything in the interfaith chapel. No, I will not advertise it.
No, 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 I mean, the, that, would you say it's available for funerals and wakes?
No, nothing's going to change.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I just do that.
In the letter that you sent to the board here, um, you say the property is currently primarily used to conduct memorial and funeral services. Um, would you call that an extension of the funeral business down the street?
No. And, and I think one thing that's important to remember when we're making these determinations, um, based on the zoning code, that it's not about the owner of the property. It's really only about the use of this particular property. Because, uh, the reality is that Ms. Williams could sell this property tomorrow. She could sell this to a church tomorrow. And their use of the property is what matters and whether they're allowed to do it under the zoning code, not, not who owns it. And so we need to determine whether this religious place of worship, whether these religious services that are offered exclusively at this property are permitted under, under the zoning code, not whether Ms. Williams is allowed to offer them.
Right. And, um, you would say the same activities take place at the funeral home itself? The wakes, funeral services on other occasions?
Definitely.
Okay. And prayers involved in most of them?
Same thing.
Would you consider that a church?
No. And, and the reason is, in the funeral home, she has another, uh, a business. That's the internment, the preparation of bodies for burial. That does not take place at all in this property. So what we're looking at is what is the primary use of the property? Or in, in our case, what is the entire use of the property? Which is only for these religious services. So that's the distinction between, um, say, the funeral home or, you know, a party house. This isn't, uh, the decision that we're asking for today is not going to allow a party house, uh, to call itself a place of religious worship or just because, say, they have weddings there. Because the primary use of that property would not be for religious services.
Could this chapel, uh, could this, is this location be used for weddings?
It could be used for weddings, yes.
Has a wedding ever taken place there?
No, it has not, I don't believe so.
Nope, haven't had-
Have you ever been asked to have a wedding there?
Nope, I have not been asked to have a wedding. Uh, I have been approached by several clergy, uh, to use the building regularly on Sundays. Uh, they would like to move their congregations, uh, into that facility. But I'm not comfortable offering that space to anybody until I find out from the town, can I have this space or not?
Okay.
Uh, so there's considerable, uh, interest in, uh, churches, um, wanting to use this space on a regular basis, specifically on Sundays, uh, for Sunday worship. Because their congregations, um, we have one church that is using the auditorium. Um, they're renting a room in the auditorium, they want a more formal space. Uh, I've been asked about that. Uh, there's a church, uh, again, moving from location to location, asked if ours was available. And I actually have emailed that, he, he did email and ask, well, what's going on with your church? He said, it's not ready yet, but I'll let you know, uh, if things change. Um, so there is interest in, um, use other than wakes and funerals. But because we're unclear, um, I'm not comfortable bringing someone on board with me and I'm unclear where I'm going.
Just to be clear, is the Turkish Soci- who owns the building?
The Turkish Society of Rochester owns the building. I have a purchase offer contingent upon my use.
So your purchase offer is contingent upon us determining, or the town determining that it satisfies the definition of church or place of religious worship as set forth in the town code?
Exactly, especially after I spent a hundred thousand dollars on renovations that the town said I had to do to use this space as a chapel. I did exactly as they asked.
Right, so if we-
Used it as a chapel, and I have a C of O to use it as a chapel.
Right, so if we were to agree with your position, and I, I see that, that the downstairs space appeared to me to be set up with tables and chairs and kitchen things, uh, as you might find in a church dining room and a church kitchen. Would it be your intent to, assuming that these, all the safety concerns and, and whatever obstacles there might be that don't relate to the use, uh, are taken care of? Would that be used in conjunction with wakes and funerals? Or would that be used for any separate purpose?
In conjunction with wakes and funerals. If a family needs a place-
And weddings if they took place.
And weddings. Or, but a, a service would have to be going on at the chapel. It will not be offered as a place that you can just gather and eat. I would like to use it for after funeral, uh, receptions. Uh, right now, it's, it's just sitting there right now. And just this past week, I had a family that had a service at the chapel and they had to go someplace else for their reception after. I thought it was a bit inconvenient, but they needed their reception spot.
If I could ask a couple of questions, and I think-
Be my guest.
That, that what you just raised is an interesting point. I understand how a funeral mass or a funeral service can be considered religious. I'm having a hard time understanding how a wake or visiting hours or calling hours could be considered a religious use. And after the comment you just made, I really have a hard time understanding how eating food after a funeral service is considered a religious use. So maybe you could help me understand better how all of those are religious uses?
They are religious uses. And, and it's important to remember that New York State and New York State courts have always taken a fairly wide view of religious uses. And just, just as an example, um, religious schools have been considered religious uses that are exempt or cannot be regulated, uh, by a zoning code. Ancillary uses to a, to a church such as a school, uh, parsonage, rectory have been, have been held to be religious uses. But at the same time, these wakes are religious services. And the important thing to remember is that there's always an element of prayer. There's always, almost always also going to be a reading of scripture. That is inherent-
Is prayer and scripture required to make it religious?
Not necessarily, but in, in this instance, that is the, that is the defining, uh, part of this use that makes it religious. It's also the fact that this is one, um, sort of life experience, one event that people almost exclusively turn to religion for. And our society's gotten to the point where for a large number of people, that may in fact be their only experience with religion. And for those people, that's, this is very important time. And they're, might be their only, uh, time that they turn to for religious services. So I think it's important that we recognize them that way.
If- I gotta think about that some more. Churches.
So that goes, your, your, your answer goes, uh, applies the same to meals after funeral services? Those are also religious in nature?
Absolutely.
Because people pray at them?
Absolutely. If, if, if a church, um, has a, a kitchen or an area for receptions in its building, that absolutely would be considered part of the church. Um, there's several churches on this street and I'm sure none of us would be surprised to find out that they have rooms where their congregation can meet to eat, uh, after services during Sunday school. Um, it's not just the, you know, traditional Sunday services that count as, um, a religious use. It's, it's everything that that organization or that this property use, is used for, for the religious purpose. And that's entirely what this property is used for. It goes right to those big important events in people's lives where they've turned to religion and where they are going to use prayer and scripture to help make sense of the world and the afterlife and the, the pain and the experiences that they're having. And those are very important experiences.
Well, you know, with reference to this issue about meals and whether that's religious, I mean, I know that the scout troop that meets at Christ the King, or, or I'm not sure what it's called now. I know it used to be called Christ the King on, uh, King's Highway, has, uh, fish fry dinners as their fundraisers in the kitchen, uh, gym dining area of the church every Friday in Lent, other than Good Friday, so, and it's a good fish fry, so go and support them. Um, I don't think that takes away from the characterization of the use of the property as a church or place of religious worship. So I'm, I'm not clear that, and other churches that I'm familiar with also have kitchen area and meals. And I don't think it takes away from anyone's perception that they're a church or, uh, place of religious worship. So I think it's focused mainly on what the main characterization and use of the building is about. And that's what I think we've been talking about.
Would there be a distinction between, uh, a, a building that had meals for the public versus a building that has meals for only a private group of people that are paying for it?
Well, uh, I don't know. Salem United Church Christ has a, has a soup kitchen that they run, uh, every day. And yet, I know that there have been, uh, occasions when kitchens in churches have been, uh, used by, uh, members or friends of the organization to hold private parties. There've been birthday parties and anniversary parties and other kinds of, uh, meals and celebrations at the church that I belong to on Titus Avenue, so.
Yeah, and it-
Again, I don't think that takes away from whether it's a church or a place of religious worship.
And I think that's right. So there can definitely be, in addition to the, the primary use, you know, many ancillary related uses. So I think what should really focus on, and, and that's a, a perfect example, where, where you have a, a church where people go to regular Sunday services. There, there can also be Boy Scout events and pancake breakfasts and fish fries and, and other things that don't take away, um, because they, they make sense in conjunction with the primary use, um, as a church. So here, I think the question would be, you know, whether the, the primary use, which I think we're all agreeing is, uh, the funerals and the wakes that are performed there, whether those would be categorized as, um, a, a use that would constitute a use as a church or place of religious worship. And if they are, then sort of the ancillary, uh, activities that come along with that, like the serving of food and, and dining would, would, could fall within that umbrella as well. But the focus should, should be more on, you know, what, what the building is, is primarily being used for.
Would it, would it be proper for us to differentiate wakes from funerals? So if the property were used seventy-five percent of the time for wakes?
Yes.
And only used for funerals, let's say fifteen percent of the time? Would that be something that we could consider in terms of whether or not it's for a religious use versus a non-religious use?
I think that makes sense. I think if you find that, you know, the, the prop, the, the overwhelming majority of the time, the property is just being used for wakes and if, if it's shown that those are somehow different than funerals and you think there's less of an element of a religious use for a wake, that, then yeah, that's completely relevant. I also want to clarify, um, when we were talking about the standard of review here, and I use the words reasonable, unreasonable, I probably should have used correct and incorrect. Um, so it, it's not necessarily, um, it, because as the chairman pointed out, you could find that the interpretation was reasonable, but still incorrect. So, so you're really looking at this and determining, uh, whether or not you think the right decision was made on, based on your review of what the code says and the facts that you, that you're going to hear, whether or not this, this use classifies as a church or place of religious worship.
I just have a question. Would you characterize the way that it's been used in, as a church as a not-for-profit, right?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
I'm just asking, would you, the way it's been used in the past as a chapel, that is, churches by their very nature are considered a not-for-profit charity organization?
Yes.
And would you, the way it would be used in this, in this setting, would it be as part of a business or for-profit?
Um, it, it, it currently is owned by a corporation that is a for-profit corporation. Just as an aside, uh, DM Williams Funeral Homes does not charge, uh, does not charge for, for use of the chapel. It's open to, for people to use and there's no rent, there's no fee to use it. Uh, that's in part because Ms. Williams has almost no involvement with the services, um, that go on, um, in the chapel. They're almost, they're all, uh, officiated by members of the clergy, so.
Let me rephrase, I'm sorry, I'll be more clear. So the, you're saying that the, the way it's being used now, that there wouldn't be instances where there would be a bigger funeral sadly, but it would be not fit down the street or somewhere else. But this would be my, the place where, and that is a, that is a business, correct? A, a funeral home is a business?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's, I just wanted to clarify.
The question I would have, and, uh, Ms. Williams mentioned that she has churches that are, or congregations that are, um, interested in possibly renting the facility from her on a regular basis. If we were to determine that she did sign a contract with one of these churches that wants to use it every Sunday, then it changes the whole, what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Then it is, then it is an official place of worship, it is an official church. Her funeral home uses it for funerals and, and wakes as needed. And then it changed, but at this point, I think, I think Nick, Mr. Weatherby's, uh, uh, idea is, right now, it's, um, a, a business. It's, it, it doesn't fall under the category of a church. Well, I don't know that, I mean, I don't know necessarily that a church has to be not-for-profit. I, I'm not aware of any requirement that says that you can't have a-
That's a good point.
Can't have a church that if it's not regarded as a charitable or not-profit organization.
And, and if I may, particularly that distinction, that requirement is not found in the town code definition of, of church or place of worship. There is a definition provided in the code. Um, there's nothing in there about not-for-profit status. And, and again, I want to back to the point I made earlier that this determination is not about the owner. It's about the actual use because Ms. Williams could sell this property tomorrow to a recognized church and the use of the property, uh, would not change if they, you know, continued to use it for wakes and-
And to back up, there is, there is a distinction in, in the town code. It's called your assessment, your taxes. And that's what you file, when the Turkish Society filed their taxes every year, they typically have taken a not-for-profit status. Uh, and this year, they chose not to. I don't know what the reason for that was, but I wanted to point that out, that that is not how is in the assessor's roles this year.
Currently, uh, do you have a lease currently with the Turkish Society?
A lease, yes.
A lease with an option?
With it, yes.
And so currently they're, it's, right, they're looking, they can't take it as a not-for-profit because they're-
That was gonna be my question that you started. I thought you were gonna ask it. Is that the, does the decision that we make tonight carry tax implications with it?
Our, our position is that it does not. And that in fact, the tax-exempt status, um, is entirely irrelevant to the question today, which is, is the use permitted under the zoning code? What is the property being used for? It's really not about the organization. The organization that is taxed, it's about how is this property being used? And you can also look back to the code. There are no references to the New York State, uh, tax rules, to the federal tax rules or, or not-for-profit, uh, tax-exempt statuses, so.
I, I, yeah, I'll, I can answer that. There, there's no direct implication, but in order to, uh, have a real property tax exemption, um, based on the, the type of use of the property, that it's, that it's a religious or charitable use, you have to be organized a certain way under the not-for-profit corporation law, which it sounds like the, the actual owner of the property is if they were receiving exemptions in years prior. But in addition to the owner being a not-for-profit corporation, the property has to be being used for not-for-profit corp, or, you know, religious charitable purposes. So that may be why they no longer receive the exemption because they have the ownership as a not-for-profit corporation. But the use, um, is not being deemed charitable or religious. So this board, if, if you were to find that the, the property is being used as a church or religious place of worship, although that wouldn't directly, you know, it would automatically mean that the property's tax-exempt if they were to apply for an, for an exemption next year, that could be used as evidence by the owner as to why an exemption, you know, well, why this, these should, this should be considered, uh, you know, a charitable or religious purpose and why an exemption should be granted. So it's, it's not directly impacting the tax, the tax-exempt status, um, but it, it could be used in the future, you know, toward an argument for a tax exemption.
This reminds me of the discussion we had about the daycare that wanted to go into the school at St. Joseph's ads. Because if it had been a, they pointed out to us that if they were not-for-profit, they wouldn't have been here. But because they were for profit, it was felt that they needed to have a, our approval before they could, could rent the space. And, and we've had that issue that came up, I think, with St. John's Lutheran Church renting office space in the past.
Cause I think it's more clear if it were, uh, if it were a five-one-three, if it was a, if it's a non-profit.
You can have a for-profit school and it would still be a school.
And you can also have a religious use or a religious organization that, that does make a profit. And I think it's worth noting that Ms. Williams is currently working on forming a not-for-profit, uh, organization to, to own this property. But, you know, again, I don't, that's not actually relevant because what's important in a zoning case is not who owns the property, but how it's actually used. What goes on inside that building that matters? And are those services that are being provided there, are they religious in nature? And again, we think the answer is yes.
Well, I guess I, I, I'm still not clear because there was a time when I was gonna buy that, that building, that Turkish building. Before it was, Turkish Society was a school. Again, all tax-exempt properties. And I checked with the town, if it's a, a private piece of property and not a school, not a church, what would be the taxes on it? And when I got the figure, I didn't buy it. But too much.
Well, and I will say, there are other, due to the nature of where society is today in general, there are other, um, call them, for lack of a better term, religious type properties for sale in town. There is a church up on Culver, farther up, that's for sale. There's a church that was for sale on St. Paul. There's a, there's a temple, uh, south of that that is for sale. And I think communities like ours are- like ours are going to have to face how we deal, this is something we have to be consistent on in press, in the precedent we set, because it's very likely that those buildings, we don't know what they'll be used as, but we have to be realistic about what the, what the uses are for them in terms of going forward. So I want to.
Yeah.
We had that very issue two doors up with the, from this property with the Jehovah's Witness Church that was on Culver Road that's now Dennis Office, because no congregation was interested in buying it, and it wasn't feasible for any other use. We went through all the, that was just a couple of years ago that we did that. And you're right, I mean, as churches decline.
Mr. Chairman, would the applicant have an opportunity to respond after we hear from the fire marshal?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
And everyone else as well.
And that, that's a, a good point as well to keep in mind here, that because this is an interpretation, you know, of an actual definition under the code, so it wouldn't apply just to this particular property. If you were to find that the types of uses that we're talking about here constitute church or place of religious worship uses, then that would apply to, you know, any other, any other property in the town as well.
Can I have one more question? I just want to clarify, primary use is to hold funeral services before church services, correct? That's what's happening there?
Before church services?
Primarily, it's a funeral service, not a church service. A church service is just secondary to the fact that people are praying there, so you're calling it a church service?
Um, I'm not sure if I completely understand your question, but we're doing almost entirely wakes and funerals, and we're saying that those are religious in nature because they all.
Because people pray.
Yes, correct.
If I understand you correctly, you're not just saying they're religious because people pray, you're saying that wakes and funerals are part of almost the religious bookends of life, and that religion is important at that part of life, and that the funeral itself is a religious exercise. Am I understanding that correctly?
Absolutely. I mean, in my opinion, this is the most important function of religion, is to help people deal with, with death and the afterlife.
But you can have a funeral without a church?
Certainly. Was there any other questions?
You could have a funeral in a church without religion.
Yes, you could. Probably could, yeah, absolutely. But, but it's important to remember that these services in particular have all been religious in nature, and that's just, that's just their clientele, that, that's been their experience.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Merrick?
Good evening.
Good evening. If you could explain to us why you feel that this use does not comport with the definition of church or place of religious worship?
Well, my involvement with this property has been over a number of years, and, and this is what finally led up to it, is I didn't know what the property was being used for. I had a, a few complaints, some were from the police department, one was in 2012 around Halloween, when there was the Narcotics Association, or that the N.A. was meeting there, and the police were called there for a suspicious condition, and that was that the parking lot was filled, but no lights in the building, and found that there was this meeting going on in the basement, and it was followed by a Halloween party, and it was on a Saturday evening. And so right after that, then I started to get more involved in here, and I know that Denise has done a nice job of trying to clean up the building, but it's always been a tale chasing the dog. She would ask us to come over, and Dave Smith, who was the building inspector a few years ago, and myself, went down there, and we did a courtesy inspection and identified some of the violations, and the next time we were there, a lot of the work was done without permits. And when I was there, most recently, on a courtesy inspection with the new building inspector, John Nitty, we found that the, the work had been done without permits, and it wasn't to code for commercial. So what really catapulted this into my interpretation was, and it's not really so much about the church, it's I didn't know what this was, it was being a business of some kind, but on February 28th of this year, which was a Friday night, I was called by the police for a parking problem there, and a concern they had with the operations that were going on inside the building. So typically, what I do when I'm on a call is I take a few minutes to write down the things that are kind of important, and I'm kind of glad I did tonight, because I want to affirm a few things. I understood tonight that if you had the body outside of a funeral home, it could not be seen from the windows. And on that evening, when I, when I arrived there, first I was in civilian clothes, because I was out to dinner, and I was in my car, not the marked town, fire marshal vehicle, so really, nobody knew who I was. And I drove around the neighborhood after a meeting with the police who called me, and they gave me the, the, the figures on what they were complaining about, that was A, the parking, and B, the use of the building. So I had driven around twice, and, and I, I pulled into the funeral home, a couple of blocks south of this location, to write my notes, and I had a conversation with Ms. When I was driving around, there was nobody in the parking lot to guide me for parking. I parked actually in a fire lane, private car, figured I'd see what would happen, got out of my car, I didn't go inside the building, I walked up and looked in the window and noticed there was a casket, and it was open, and there were people coming in and out. So if, if that's the truth, that you can't have an open casket visible through windows, that particular night that happened, and I had documented it in my notes here.
Was the body visible or just the open casket?
No, no, the body was visible, I, I knew, you know, I'll read you if you want what my notes say for that night. Now, these were done, you know, shortly after, I had no idea of the testimony here tonight, so I, you know, I wrote down here, "At approximately 17:58 hours on Friday, February 28th, 2014, the Aronikway Police Officer Brandon Salloway was dispatched to Vinton Road and Culver Road for a parking complaint. Upon his arrival, it was noted that the parking lot at 2841 Culver Road was full, and vehicles were parking on the north side of both Vinton Road and Williams Street. Because of the snow, these parked vehicles, traffic on both Williams Street and, and Vinton Road was reduced to one lane, causing a condition where one vehicle traveling down the street, and another going in the opposite direction, would not be able to continue, and one would have to back up. The building at 2841 Culver Road was full of people, and it was learned that there was a wake being held inside. The IPD notified the fire marshal during, that notify, a bus delivered a group of people to this location. The fire marshal did respond. At approximately 18:40 hours, the fire marshal arrived and spoke with the Aronikway Police Sergeant James Reed and Officer Brandon Salloway. The bus had dropped off the group of people and left. The police informed the fire marshal that Ms. Williams, the owner and operator of the funeral home, was driving around and supervising the parking. The fire marshal drove around the neighborhood and noted the following. A wake was being held inside at 2841 Culver Road. A large group of people were entering and leaving the building, creating a constant flow of people and traffic on the roads in the area. Inside the building, on the southwest portion of the first floor, was an open casket with people paying their respects to, to the departed. Basement lights were on, and people were gathered at the top of the stairs just inside the main door, however, because of the glass-blocked windows, viewing the basement was not possible. Parking on Williams Street and Vinton Road was creating traffic issues in both side streets. The south parking lot of the Aronikway Presbyterian Church was also full. A larger parking lot at the Aronikway Presbyterian Church off of Perrin Drive was empty. The D.M. Williams Funeral Home at 2793 Culver Road was dark with no activity, and the parking lot at the D.M. Williams Funeral Home had only a few parked cars." Those were my observations from that night. After I made these observations, I went down into the parking lot at the funeral home to write up my notes, while it was fresh in my memory, and I had a conversation with Ms. Williams. She made the comment here that she doesn't have control over the funeral home, she leaves it up to the people, but that night, and I have this in my notes, she, and I use the FM and DW on my notes here, FM for Fire Marshal, DW for Denise Williams, but I got FM asked who was in charge, so that the fire marshal could find out, and that was to a question that I had asked earlier, and probably I should read the whole thing.
That probably makes sense.
Okay, well, so while sitting in the parking lot, the privately-owned vehicle, and writing my notes, Denise Williams drove up next to me and spoke with me, and I asked her what was happening at 2841. Denise Williams responded, it was a service going on, and she had just explained to me earlier. Fire marshal asked, what time is the service? Denise Williams appeared to look at the clock and the vehicle and answer, in 10 minutes. Fire marshal noticed it was about 19:05 hours, and responded, is it scheduled for 7:00 P.M.? Denise Williams responded with yes. Fire marshal asked, what is the name of the pastor doing the service? Denise Williams answered, I don't know. Fire marshal asked, you don't know? Denise Williams responded, I just, and did not respond, I just looked at the fire marshal, remained silent. Fire marshal, is it going to be, fire marshal, is it you that's going to do the service? Denise Williams, again, no answer. Fire marshal asked, who was in charge, so he could find out? Denise Williams responded quickly and definitively, I'm in charge, I make the arrangements, this is my business. Fire marshal again asked, so who's doing the service? Pausing and then asking, do you know? Denise Williams started to speak, saying something to the fact that the service was tomorrow morning, and then she stopped talking. What do you mean that the service is tomorrow morning? Fire marshal asked. Denise Williams stated, stared straight without speaking. Fire marshal again asked, when is the service? Denise Williams, again, no answer. Fire marshal asked, why, why she stated she was in charge and didn't know when the service was, or who was holding it, and who the pastor was? Denise Williams stated, she wanted to report that the police had lied, and wanted to report it to their supervisor. Fire marshal asked, how did the police lie? And no, there was no answer. Again, asked, what did the police say that she thought was a lie? They lied, they're not telling the truth, and she was going to report it. Then she made a comment, and they said that they were called there because the cars were parked on both sides of the road, and she again stopped talking. And that's, that's basically the, the reference to my notes on that. Conversation ended there, she backed up, drove away, I finished my notes and left. So I don't know if the, I don't know if the basement was being used that night, but the lights were on, there was a meeting we had a few days later at the town, at the town hall here, and we had Ms. Williams and, and one of her, I don't know if it was architect or engineer in here, and the comment that was made that, that evening was that, about that evening, I should say, at this meeting, was that the, the lights were off in the basement, and it wasn't being used. And, and that stuck in my mind, because I remember documenting that lights were on. She says that she hasn't got any controls, and yet, that night, she definitively told me that she has all the controls. She says that tonight, that the body can't be viewed through windows, and I went up purposely to look inside to see if it were a funeral going on, and saw the open casket. So then I, I went back to do a little research to find out a little bit more about the service, and this was a, a service for Ricky Elliott, and it says here, the wake will be held on Friday, February 28th, 5:00 to 8:00 P.M. at the Williams Interfaith Chapel, 2841 Culver Road, Rochester. The funeral service will be held on Saturday, March 1st, at 11:00 A.M. at the Am Baptist Church at 175 Genesee Street in Rochester. That caused me to look a little bit more into, online, and read some of the other obituaries, and while some, while some of them were being held at the, the D.M. Williams Interfaith Chapel, I found a great deal of them that were not. They were having services at one particular day and time at the 2841 Culver Road address, and then the services were being held at some other religious facilities. There was one here that, April 27th, and the family will receive friends on Friday, 5:00 to 8:00, at the Williams Interfaith Chapel, 2841 Culver Road. The homecoming celebration is Saturday at 1:00 P.M. at the Abundant Life Faith Ministries on 83 Whitney Street. And in, and in good faith, I do have some here that she did have the services there right after the calling. When, when I had asked her about this, what the use of the, the facility was going to be, she did say it was going to be for religious purposes. It was going to be for people who had a death but did not have a church that they belonged to, and they wanted to have a, a religious service, and they had no place else to go. And, and in my naive interpretation, I thought, okay, you know, you go to the funeral home, you have your calling, and then you go to a church, but instead, they would go here. So that's, my, my understanding was, and, and I didn't question it too much further, but after I started to realize that they were having these three, four-hour wakes, these traffic patterns were creating problems in the neighborhood, and then there were sometimes the services there and sometimes elsewhere, I had asked her about that, and she had told me that that was the culture, that the black culture does that, they have a wake and followed by the service. And then I started to realize, but that's not always the case here. So I came up with the interpretation that it wasn't really being used as a church, there were no weddings, there were no Sunday services, there were no Bible studies, there were calling. I didn't know until tonight that you couldn't see the, the body in a casket from an open window, that night I did view it. So to my interpretation, that was a wake, it would have been conducted in a funeral home normally, but because of the size, was being held in the, in the Interfaith Chapel. So I think it's a business.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, it sounds like you're saying that the primary use of this building, it's primarily being used as an accessory structure to the funeral home itself, that it's being used for wakes and things like that, that are things that you would connect with the funeral home, as opposed to being used primarily for church purposes?
Correct. I'm not going to disagree that there's probably not any embalming or preparatory work in the, going on in that facility, but there are showings and calling hours going on there, and then religious services being taken to another location for that purpose. That's my interpretation.
Well, sometimes they're done at a different facility, and sometimes they're done there, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So it wasn't, to my understanding, that when you don't belong to a church, or you don't have an organization that you belong to, you could come there and have it. That was my interpretation at the beginning, and that's why I changed my mind, because that one letter I did write, it was my understanding, and that's correct, it was my understanding, that if you didn't have an organization or a church that you belonged to, and unfortunately passed before you had a chance to join one, that you could still have that right to be honored in a religious atmosphere by going to an Interfaith Chapel, didn't matter what religion you were. That was my original understanding, and then this developed, and I changed that.
I, I guess I'm still unclear about the, the wake. Apparently, you were there on February 28th for a wake, is, as that would be, there was a funeral, I think you said that.
Well, yes, and I can't, I get the term, because that's what it said in the newspaper. The wake will be held on Friday.
Right. So did you go in to the facility and observe the activities?
I got out of my car, and I walked up to the side window and looked in the window, and I saw the casket, and the, the casket was open, there was the body inside, and the area was filled, there were a lot of people out on the front steps.
Because the testimony earlier was that there were, wakes were presided over by religious officiants, clergy.
That's correct, that's, I heard that testimony.
Right. And so my question is, was that the case, or were you not in a position to observe whether or not that was the case that night?
I wasn't in a position to observe if there was any prayer going on that night, that's why I had that conversation, because I was trying to find out, and I didn't get an answer. So I can't answer whether there was or wasn't. But I did question it. But I did question it.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
If this question isn't proper I'd ask the council say so but in your opinion if there were no wakes at this building if there were only funeral masses or funeral services would that change your determination would that have changed your determination and again if it's speculation or anything like that?
Let me.
We'll consider it for whatever it's worth.
Okay, I'm going to try and understand I think what I'm understanding here is let's say that what I originally believed that if you didn't have an organization to belong to and you were brought there for that one hour two hour service and then taken to wherever it was cemetery or wherever would I look at that as religious I probably wouldn't have changed my interpretation because that's what I had understood it to be. But it was important to get an understanding and I'm glad we're bringing it before the board because it's been so so confusing here because every time there's an application orders and inquiry about the use of the building it's always been well what is it going to be used for and and that's why there was a conditional certificate of occupancy brought about for just the upstairs use for just the Interfaith Chapel and the basement could not be used and the basement couldn't be used because of other code issues too. But again we were you know tail chasing a dog on this because we had done some inspections and then the work got done and then we had to come back issue some permits get some corrections and we tried to work you know with the applicants here and the property owner.
My question is I'll be brief I've been to a number of funerals I should say a number of calling hours where the funeral has taken place right afterwards in the funeral home. Because my question is does the Williams Funeral Home do the funerals in the funeral home ever or mostly or or do they are they reassigned to the chapel?
I have that funeral three months funeral home I have that funeral in the chapel.
So both, right? But the funeral home is not a church.
No, it's not a church.
The chapel we want to say but we want to what we're looking to say maybe.
The question is is the chapel a church?
Yeah.
The question is what is that parcel being used for?
Right, twenty eight forty one.
I'm only saying chapel because that's the term for the building but is the building a church or a place of religious worship as defined in the code that's the issue, right? Any other questions of Mr. Merrick? And then what I'd like to do at this point is open this matter up to public input first. We would hear from any of those who wish to speak in favor of the applicant's position that the use of the building constitutes a church or religious place of religious worship as defined in the town code is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of that position from who's here in the public? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's position that the use of the building is a church or a place of religious worship?
Yes, my name's Bruce Stanley I live at one forty nine Vinton Road right up the street from the chapel. In my opinion when you look at this property is it chapel or is it a funeral home or what is it? To me and living and seeing it every every time they have a service there it's an extension of this funeral home. For me and being a homeowner it looks as if there's not enough room down at the funeral home to hold the service or whatever it might be so they move it up to the chapel which causes a big problem for us as far as the parking is concerned the traffic and the unsafe conditions. A funeral to me is when you bring the body in you have it for viewing you do say prayers you do have a bit of a service and that's what I I see I see the body come in the back door not all the time but there's been more occasion where the body is brought in and I'm sure it's been viewed I've never gone in to look but to me that's just an extension of what you know was right down the street so.
Let me ask you a question if the body was brought into the door of the Presbyterian Church and then the parking lots there were full and people were parked on the street and then the body was taken out of the Presbyterian Church and the cars all left would there be anything different about that from what you're able to see that's taking place at this building?
Well, the difference to me is that you know the Presbyterian Church is a nonprofit organization where this is a business that's taking that business from one location to another and that business in our one residential area is causing a parking problem and unsafe condition problem on our streets.
All right, except that as the applicant has pointed out and as our attorney has pointed out and as is pretty clear I think to all of us the issue is not who is conducting activities at the property but what activities are being conducted.
And I understand that and what I'm saying.
And so my question is have you ever gone in and observed what is taking place inside?
Like I said earlier no I have never gone inside all I've seen is just like what they do at a funeral home is bring the body in have a service it may last you know a half an hour you might have people in there longer than that you might have people coming and going just like you do at a funeral home.
So your issues center mainly around the parking issues and congestion when these activities are taking place and the impact that it has on you and your neighbors?
That's that's mainly it, yes.
All right, so if those issues were addressed so that the traffic and the parking was addressed then there'd be no difference that you'd be able to discern between what takes place there and what takes place at the Presbyterian Church or what takes place at the funeral home?
Right, whether they whether they hold the funeral services at the funeral home or at the Faith Chapel I guess it wouldn't really make much of a difference because it's all in the same neighborhood what makes a big difference is the is the amount of people that come and the parking situation that causes on our streets now I know that's not really the issue here the issue is to is it really a chapel a church or is it a business and what I'm trying to say it's a business it's a funeral home business.
I think it could be all of those. The question is is it a church or a place of religious worship if it could be a business that does that or it doesn't have to be the definition that's in the code does not refer to whether it's profit for profit or non-for-profit charitable or not.
I understand that my interpretation would be that it's that it's a business and it's for profit that's you know that's what I want to bring to all of you and that's what I see living on that street that's my viewpoint that's what I'm trying to get across to you.
And so but I just want to be clear the main concern is the effect on the neighborhood of whatever it is that's being done in the building and that is a separate issue to be addressed.
I agree.
Okay.
Yes, and getting to that that issue of parking I did make some photographs of a recent service that was there I think you all got copies of it and I was just curious if there was any questions on that or anything I could clarify on that.
At the time that the cars were parked there was there parking available in the Presbyterian Church parking lot and or at the funeral home?
At the Presbyterian Church I didn't go up that far to see if there were any cars. All I was concerned about that particular day was getting off of Culver Road before I got rear ended.
A legitimate concern.
Yes, and you know there was other times as the fire marshal had mentioned where cars were parked on both sides of the streets where there was hardly any room for a car to get up and down the street let alone a fire truck or an ambulance or something like that and that's a little concerning to me because in the neighborhood the eight houses that we have right in that little section there's three elderly ladies that live by themselves well over the well in their eighties or nineties and to see that kind of activity going on whether it's a church or funeral home or whatever is very concerning.
Okay, thank you sir. Does anyone else have any other questions? Do you want the definition again? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's interpretation? Step right up.
I'm Deborah Stanley and I live at one forty nine Vinton Road. I've resided on Vinton Road for thirty six years. The Turkish Society has always been there there's always been a funeral home where the Williams Funeral Home is now we've never had the congestion and the awful traffic and commotion that we've been having on our street. The cars they just park wherever and you know both sides of the streets the unsafe situation as my husband just said. What I really also wanted to talk about was Ms. Williams saying that they don't use the lower level there's no food there you know we can see directly what goes on over there. People are coming out of there with food containers Wegman's truck pulling up dropping off food a few weeks ago I find that to be untrue what is really going on in that building and I think living in that neighborhood for thirty six years I should know what's really going on over there. That's what I have to say.
Anyone else?
Good evening all my name is Moritz Clemente I reside at one fifty two Vinton Road. So I agree pretty much with what has been said by Deb and Bruce you know the parking situation has been pretty bad lately but if I can add something also on this matter is that I don't know by curiosity I was just searching doing some reading about funeral home business and how if that somehow affects you know value of real estate property and you know I bought the house eight years ago and you know there was an existing business of Williams Funeral Home and there was the Turkish Society being used by those people. And so if my understanding is that this is going to be like an extension of the funeral home business and the wake I mean it's going to be does that will that have any impact for the future in my the value of my property? I was I was at a wake this afternoon and in East Rochester and there were really tons of people we had to wait online I mean in line for about forty minutes to get in because people I mean it was congested people coming out and people going in but we did and you know there was the service and everybody was was fine with that I just I really I just I mean I'm having a hard time on the issue that this is going to be I mean the gentleman I'm sorry I forget I forget your name he said clearly that the mainly activity is going to be wakes and funeral services which of course involves prayers with all respect obviously but so it's going to be a second funeral home in my in our neighborhood that's my question. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
San Felzone five Catalina Drive I'm opposed to it because my observation is because the excessive traffic that this extension is creating in the neighborhood we have to keep in mind this is a R one residential area and it's being used for more and to make a correction I've lived on Catalina Drive for fifty six years and I did serve on the Architecture Review Board for three years with the Town of Aranda and also for seven years on the Planning Board so I worked on a lot of issues regarding that particular piece of property. The only thing that building was never used for a church they had a it was a school to start with and they had an auxiliary building to the side of it which actually covered the octopus type air conditioning that they have going into their unit well it collapsed and that was the use for the mosque and any services they ever had there that went and that building as it stands today was never used for religious services, okay? The parking on those streets of Vinton Road Williams Street like the gentleman stated both sides of the street I've been there at different times the school buses came and dropped the kids off I've had there was been accidents on the street where the front are denters where cops had to come and issue tickets or whatever they did investigate all these things contributed to taking away from our one residential and I'd just like to say that let this be something when your decision on this could also happen on St. Paul Boulevard at one of the larger homes this can happen anywhere in the Town of Aranda quite we need to focus on protecting the R one residential areas.
Thanks, sir, all I would point out to you though is that the question before us isn't about traffic it's about what the use of the building is.
Use of the building but what is the use of that building doing to the neighborhood?
Well, those are other issues for this board tonight the issue before us is is or is not the use of this.
Will this move on to anything else to the Planning Board? This won't go further than here, right?
The traffic and other congestion issues are issues that have to be dealt with separately from this determination is this a church or place of religious worship that's the issue before us I understand the traffic.
I understand and another condition is what is the actual occupancy of that building? How many square feet are there and the parking lot holds seventy five vehicles initially now with the removal of the temporary building it probably gives you another twelve places, right? I mean it's they have to exceed the occupancy of that of that building because I mean there's so many there's so many vehicles and I tell you one thing they do park in the Presbyterian I would call it the south parking lot, okay? They don't park in the would be the western part of their parking lot, okay? But I'm just saying it has a big effect on this R one residential area but we're not going to work we're not making that decision on that.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
That's a decision for another day about adequate parking and all that, right? That town that's something that the town addresses separately?
Well, it would address it separately if there were an application in terms in front of the Planning Board but I think in terms of the usage of the property I think it'd probably be entirely appropriate given the neighbor the neighborhood to take that into account but that's up to the board that's.
I mean the consideration should be for the neighborhood, okay? What effect it has and the quality of life for the people that live there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's position with respect to whether their use of the property constitutes a church or a place of religious worship as defined in the town code? Is there anyone who'd like to come up and talk to us about it? Mr. Merrick, did you want to say anything further? I don't have anything more to say. All right, did the applicant wish to address any of the points that were raised? Okay, step right up.
I'd like to start off by saying that I really appreciate the vigorous and healthy debate about religion that we're having tonight and I also want to emphasize that you know as much as this is a good debate we don't want to fight with our neighbors and we have every intention of working with the town and working with the neighborhood on all of the issues that are brought up tonight about parking and traffic and those complaints but that's not what's at issue tonight the only issue tonight is whether the use of the property meets this definition under the code that we've talked about so it's important to. So it's important to remember that the town cannot exclude a church or a place of religious worship from an R1 zone. These parking issues are irrelevant. It is not possible for the town to exclude a church or a place of religious worship from an R1 district. If the hang-up is about whether or not the Interfaith Chapel functions as a business, we would submit that that is irrelevant, but at the same time, we are working towards creating a not-for-profit. And if that's the condition that this board wants to place on the use, we would be happy to do that. Although, again, it's our position that based on the activities that are conducted in the building, that it's a place of religious worship anyways, regardless of what the not-for-profit status is.
Would that be a proper limitation? To require that the user of the property be of a particular status, profit or not-for-profit?
Our position is that it would not.
Okay. I think our attorney agrees with that.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree that the issue is not whether this is for-profit or not-for-profit. The comment that whether it's a business is irrelevant, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that. The question is what kind of, what are they in the business of? If they're in the business of providing, you know, a place where people can, a place of religious worship versus something else, then, you know, I think that's the question.
So, and I also wanted to note, on the issue of parking, it's, the Interfaith Chapel actually shares parking with one of the churches that's just down the street, the Aranda Quay Presbyterian Church. So just to note, if there have been complaints about parking, it's actually possible that members from the Presbyterian Church may have been parking in the Interfaith Chapel's lot. And that's one of the ways that we can work together to solve any parking issues that neighbors have. We're gonna share parking lots, we already have an agreement for that. But, again, we're looking at the use of the property. And one of the things that was mentioned was the appearance from the outside, whether or not there was religious activities going on inside the building based on what someone could see from the street, based on the traffic patterns, based on whether or not there was a body that was visible from outside, based on who or what types of people were coming in and out of the building. And it's our position that there's been no testimony, no evidence today that there were not religious services going on inside the building. The only thing you've heard today is from Ms. Williams telling you that there are in fact religious services going on inside the building and that every single one of these services contains the element of prayer and/or scripture reading. And I believe Ms. Williams wanted to tell you a bit about how some of these services are run and how sometimes people will use a church for their funeral and the Interfaith Chapel for the wakes and vice versa.
Exactly. I don't plan the funeral. If I ask a family during our conference, where's the funeral going to be, they can tell me where the funeral is going to be. On more than one occasion, a family will say, "I'm having the wake at this particular church and I'm having the funeral at this particular church." Two different churches. I don't have any say over that, I just write it down, where the funeral is going to be, where the wake is going to be. In addressing my response to Greg, when he asked about who was over the service, embarrassingly, honestly, I don't know who's officiating the funeral. I don't know who that is. Who's doing the prayer, who's doing the scripture? I don't know. I just know that you're having a service in this particular place. Sometimes I only know what's going on on the program when I arrive, they'll hand me something that says, "This is what's going on tonight." I know then.
Do you officiate in any of those yourself?
I have never officiated a funeral.
You can continue, I just wanted to clarify that before I forgot it.
And also the misunderstanding about the use of the building from the public. When a person has seen my chapel, they actually assume that it's a church. And many, many times, we will catch people bringing food into the building thinking they're having a reception there. This is not a church, the reception is not here. You're more than welcome to place your container in this side, there's a side room, you probably have pictures of the building, there's a side, place it in there until it's over. They just assume that it's a church, based on our tradition, you have the reception where the funeral is. That's normally how it's done, but that's not how it's done at this Interfaith Chapel anymore. Until we can get a C of O for the basement, then it will be as it is traditionally. Just as last week, the family came and had a service, they went elsewhere for the reception. People still brought food to the chapel, not knowing, you have to take that out to Henrietta wherever you're having the reception. So there, the public that I serve assumes that this is a full-service church. We don't put out an announcement, "Don't bring food," we don't, we just put in the paper, "This is what's going on at this time."
May I ask a question? I mean, obviously you orchestrate the letting them use the building, right? So when they, a loved one passes away, they come to see you to make arrangements for their funeral. You guys discuss using the building.
Yes.
At some point, there's no rules, no game, you know, you don't tell them, "Hey, there's no food, it's used this way, it's used that way, who's the, who's gonna be the pastor?" It just kind of, and I, not that I'm trying to doubt you, but I find it hard to believe that you wouldn't know who's officiating, who the pastor's gonna be, who's gonna be doing the services in your own building. It is your building. So, again, when you say, said that night to Mr. Merrick, "I don't know," you know, it's hard to believe. I mean, I, you know, in any funeral I've ever arranged or gone to or whatever, somebody's taking charge of something. And to say that you don't have any control over, it is your building, so I would expect you to talk to the people about not having food, talk to the people, you know, "We don't have a kitchen right now, we're not, there's no food allowed," things like that. And so people know upfront, so there is no question.
Well, the family knows there is no food, but the people that are coming don't know there is no food. When I ask a family about an officiant, I'm asking in the context of, "Do you have someone to officiate?" It's a yes or a no. If they say no, I'll say, "Do you need me to get an officiant for you?" Ninety-nine percent of the time, they're saying, "Yes, we have an officiant." I don't ask who that is, so you have someone to take care of your service. I'm not a part of the service. My responsibility is to get the family to the place of the service, to get the body to the place of the service. I have nothing to do with ceremony.
Are you, consider yourself a funeral director?
Yes, I am a funeral director. Twenty-five years I've been a funeral director.
And every funeral director I ever met with always knows from A to B what's going on with that funeral, service, and so on. So I, again, I, again, I hate to sit here and doubt you and debate you of what, how you run your business, but there's a lot of unanswered questions that, in my opinion, if I was working with you, I'd wanna know what's going on and not leave it all up to... I think part of the reason a family comes to a funeral director and a funeral home to get it done is so that it's all taken care of, so they don't worry about it. I might have a priest that I'd like to be have there and I would tell you that priest and then the funeral director calls that priest and takes care of it. But they officiate it, they orchestrate it, they do the whole timeline and whatever. Again, obviously you're not doing that, it's just a big surprise to me.
Well, and I guess that my question actually is exactly about that. So of all the, so we've established that that's primarily used as for funerals and wakes. How many of the funerals or wakes that have been held there have you not prepared the body for? So I guess my question is, how many times would you say that there's been, has been a funeral or wake in that building where you, where the body has come, has been prepared somewhere else? Or would you say that predominantly the bodies are prepared by you as part of your business and then the funeral wake is held there?
Predominantly my business. I have had three occasions where another, a family from a different funeral home asked if they could have their service at the chapel and I said yes. I had nothing to do with that, it's just a facility. And I did not collect a rep for that either. So, I don't care who uses it.
It just, you're responsible for it. If someone were to get hurt, if it's a trip on a stair or whatever, it's your responsibility. Just, it just surprises me that it's that easy to borrow the building without knowing what's going on.
That's, I guess we just established, kind of established in some way, is that there's no funeral wake that's happening there except for three times, those just where the body has not been prepared at the business. So, right? I mean, that-
That's what I, I was gonna follow up, 'cause you had mentioned before that the chapel is open and that it's free. And my question was going to be, what percentage of the bodies that go through the chapel are bodies that your funeral, you know, parlor has prepared? And it seems like at least, you know, ninety-nine percent of the bodies, you've prepared, they're your customers, and that you're letting them use this building for free.
Yes.
And then in three occasions, there were other people that you let use the building for free. Okay.
Anything else?
No, unless the board has any further questions.
One question, back to the definition of, you know, religious services. What people other than funeral home employees, individuals regularly attend for religious services?
As in who's going to these services?
Right.
Members of the community. Most of the time, they're going to be families, but sometimes there are also religious organizations that reach out to Ms. Williams to use the space.
Do you have people that consistently return for religious services? Like a church traditionally would function? I'm trying to get to the definition, back to a church or a place of worship. Because Mr. Merrick, you know, he made his determination based on what he saw at the time, not what you would like the building to be, but what it actually is right now.
And if the question is about whether there are people that are returning, the same, say, family that has now been there, I don't know, multiple times in the past few years to use this particular space, is that-
For religious services.
And probably not. And the nature of the, of funerals, of this particular life event, is not such that you're going to have people, that the same families that are returning over and over again. For, you know, each family, this is hopefully an infrequent event for which they are going to turn to religious services. But what's important, and I can see where, in looking at the code's definition, that an institution that people regularly attend, that we can look at, but regularly attend, it's regularly attended by different people for the same purpose, for the same religious purpose. It is used regularly for-
For a funeral.
Correct.
Okay. So, thanks.
There any, any other questions?
All right, then we'll declare this hearing closed and the board will be in recess for ten minutes and we will resume at ten fifty. Thank you.
Nobody complains about starting early? Oh, good. As I look out, I do not see the applicants relating to sixty-nine Anchor Terrace. Uh, I do see somebody here still for seventy-seven Eagle Rock, fifty-four Russell, and twenty-eight forty-one Culver Road. So, Anchor Terrace will go to the end, and we'll do them in that order then. So, the first uh, item that we have on the for consideration then would be the application pertaining to seventy-seven Eagle Rock Drive. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application for a variance with the following findings. What the very what the um, what the variance is being requested requires would not change the character of the neighborhood because of the type of road structure and the curves and the other homes that are there would be would fit right in. There are there are no alter alternatives that would um, to this re- uh, this variance. I gotta get my head together, it's half to ten o'clock, I usually don't. Do these just like, at any rate, um, there is a the alternatives, there are none because they still need the drainage in the back of the house, and they still need to have the s- the the size of property they want for this three nice three-car garage and make it a very attractive and valuable piece of property. So, I think there there are no alternatives to this except cutting back. It's not a substantial request, uh, if you look at the numbers, they're not huge. It's that they're accommodating. Uh, there'd be no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. In fact, it's one of the reasons they're asking for the variances, to be sure that there isn't. Uh, is it self-created, uh, for only from the standpoint that they want to build a really nice home that's up to date, that fits the today's style of living and and the type of neighborhood that it is?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We are all present. Next item on the agenda is the application pertaining to fifty-four Russell Avenue. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we table this for one month to give members of the board who are willing to get up at six AM and go out there, including this guy right here, and listen and see if it really is loud at six o'clock in the morning. And if it isn't, so that they can make a very good decision at the next board meeting.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, uh, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we continue to all be present. So, we will table that to the uh, December meeting, and we will encourage all the members of the board to make early morning uh, stops there to observe the noise. We won't do it in an organized.
Separately, yeah.
We will not do it at an organized time or in an organized fashion, and we'll each draw our own conclusions from what we hear or don't hear. Next item is the application pertaining to twenty-eight forty-one Culver Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. I would uh, make a motion that I'm sure will generate a lot of discussion like we've already had, but I'm going to make a motion that we determine that the use of the property satisfies the definition of church or place of religious worship that is set forth in section two thirty-five four of the Rondacote Town Court or or Code, which is uh, that the use is by a institution that people regularly attend to participate or in or hold religious services, meetings, and other activities. And the findings that I would make with respect to that are that the testimony um, by the applicant is that the that this facility is exclusively used uh, by her and families to whom she offers is offers services through her funeral home and others who request for services and wakes, which would constitute other activities that people regularly attend and participate in and which are presided over and officiated by religious leaders, uh, whether they're clergy or some other uh, leader as designated by whatever denomination or religious practice they ascribe to. The um, fact that the uh, property and the use is conducted by a for-profit as opposed to not-for-profit entity does not, under the definition set forth in the town code, preclude uh, that uh, satisfying of the definition. The definition does not require that the same people regularly attend or participate in or hold those activities at the structure. It is the testimony is and the the large complaint from the neighborhood is that it is being regularly used. The only um, activities that we know take place are those that involve funerals and wakes at this point in time, although it's contemplated that it might be later used for conducting regular worship, which would be an expansion of that. But the I would submit that the testimony in this case establishes the connection between what it's used for and what is admittedly and, I guess, also necessarily a rather vague uh, definition under the town code. And it seems to me that when we have uh, the question in front of us as to whether or not we have to err on the side of finding that it is a religious use or finding that it is not a religious use, that certain well-established principles set forth in the First Amendment require that we lean in and accommodate uh, the religious aspect. That would be my motion and my findings.
Oh, I'll suck at that. And we can have some discussion on that?
Yeah. Oh, I anticipate a rather lengthy and and robust discussion.
I'm just gonna make it short. I totally disagree. I think she's using it as a extra building to her business. I think she does a great job at what she's doing, but I believe that the churches, the building itself is used as a funeral home. If she needed a chapel, she should have uh, put it in a in a properly zoned um, area. This is a a church building in a in a in an R-one residential. I agree with the neighbors, I agree with the and based on what the uh, all the testimony, I I believe that she's using it as an extension building to her business.
My question, I mean, this is there are two ways to look at it, as we all know. One way to look at it is from the perspective of the applicant, or I guess the petitioner. So, who's the user of this property? Is the user the individual who is allowing paying customers on a one-time basis to do something in the property? In that case, it's being used for commercial purposes. Or is it the customer who is saying, we need somewhere to go and hold our wake? And I'm not exactly sure what the use is from whose perspective.
She's she's paying, in my opinion, she's paying the lease with an option to buy uh, as a business. And I I would bet that the the business pays the uh, lease payment. Again, I I just believe it's an extension of of the funeral home. And uh, I was kind of hoping that she was gonna have a church or somebody that was rented it from her and did mass every Sunday and that, but she doesn't. And at this point, I I go with what the fire marshal said, it's being used as a funeral home. It might not have a bombing and that and body preparation being done there, but it's used as a funeral parlor, funeral home.
But that I have, I you know, I can s- I can see the rationale that viewing it as an accessory structure to a funeral home business.
Stop.
But it's not a funeral home.
No, but it's 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 just an accessory to the business. So, I mean, she's she's uh.
It may be an accessory to the business.
That she's the fact that she's trying to uh, cloud everybody's judgment, saying that every funeral is based on a religious belief. Uh, and if most people um, uh, that are religious, that follow some type of religion, usually have a church that they go to. You know, this could be for people that don't have a church, that don't necessarily have a a a specific religion or don't have a religion at all, they could have a place to go to a funeral, have a funeral mass. Just because you're not in a religion doesn't mean you don't want to have a funeral. So, again, she takes everybody because she's a business.
Well, or.
She's a funeral director.
Right, but on the other hand, uh, funerals have been held in many different locations, and I would.
I don't disagree, but they're all done by funeral directors.
Well, I would continue, I would view the that a funeral, no matter where it's held, whether it's held in a church, in an auditorium, in the war memorial, uh, is a religious observance, and it is uh, traditionally viewed as being a religious ceremony, especially when religious leaders participate.
I think you're going down a fine line because then you could say that you that my I have my a funeral in my home, and I make my home a real a a a church. And and by the way, I want to get it tax exempt.
That's only if that's only if you regularly do it. And that's here, there there's been no testimony that anything is done at this property other than these observances, and that these observances take place there regularly. Not not weekly, not monthly.
Same people.
Not by the same people, but the the.
So, it's a rented-out hall.
Right, but the institute, the definition does not require that the same people regularly attend. It only requires that people regularly attend. They're not required to be the same people, they're not required to be members or participants in any particular group. It's that they regularly attend, participate in, or hold religious services, meetings, and other activities. I think under that definition, I think we start getting into trouble when we start to say what qualifies as a religion and what doesn't. And here, it's not who's running it, and I don't think it matters whether we say that these are being run by the funeral home, the funeral home director, or the family. It's what's taking place in the building, what is going on in there, and does that satisfy the definition? If it does, then it is permitted under the town code. The parking issues, all the whether there's proper access into the uh, lower level, all those things have to be addressed by the town, but they have nothing to do with whether or not it's a church or place of religious worship.
Well, I would I would disagree with your definition of regularly.
Okay, and that's a vague term, I think.
So, let's take Darien Lake for an example. Because lots of people go to Darien Lake, I don't think you can say people regularly go to Darien Lake. If everybody went to Darien Lake once in their lifetime, and there were, you know, ten thousand people who were there every year, does that mean people regularly go there or just a lot of people go there? I don't know that the regularity, I would think that regularity suggests some type of structure, organization, or ongoing basis.
I like that point.
It's an interesting point. This is a fascinating issue. It's a great intellectual exercise. The left is participating and the right has been silent.
I think if you look at the totality of the definition in the code, it defines what we all know is a church. What we're looking at here is an extension of the funeral home establishment, holding funeral services and wakes. It's not a church.
I really don't have problems with the service parts of it, but having the, you know, the showings and everything there at the same time, that's it's business extension to me personally.
This is probably one of the toughest ones that we ever had to deal with, in my opinion, because it's such a good, strong argument either way. Something was said earlier which I I remember um, was that it's too bad that she doesn't have a a church congregation lined up to rent it to because that could change the whole thing. And and yet, that that could happen. That could still happen, it could happen tomorrow. And and it might, because there are churches looking for, she she testified to that, that there are places, you know, people are looking for places. And it seems to me that that would be a good thing to allow her to have this property available for a congregation of a bunch of people that would regularly attend church services and do all these things that fit the definition, but she can't do it unless unless we give her the okay, basically, tonight to do that.
But that's not true.
It's a different, yeah.
Right, she could she could market it differently, stop using it as a a funeral home until she, I mean, she's paying the lease right now. She's so she could start marketing it to churches or congregations that want to rent it from her.
Even if we don't.
Yes.
Yeah, we we are basically just saying whether Greg, the fire marshal, determ- determination of it being a funeral home is correct.
So, your interpretation is just based on the uses that are the current uses of the property? So, if you say now that it's not currently being used as a church or place of religious worship, that would certainly not prohibit her from engaging in uses that would be considered church or religious place of worship?
I understand that, and I'm kind of glad to hear that because in a way, I mean, I feel like I want to support her. She's a good businessperson in the town, and I think she's innovative, and I'm glad to see her doing, hopefully, very well. But she came with a request, and I'm not sure um, just which way to go, only because I certainly want to stay within the confines of the code, but by the same token, I don't want to squish down business, you know, and make it more difficult. So, I'm I'll when we vote, I'll let you know how I'm gonna vote.
Can I ask just one more question? And it goes back to a question I asked earlier, and I'm gonna, let's say, we board members, this board member is exactly fifty-fifty on this issue. Does the fact that the fire marshal has already made a determination have any impact on that?
And then if a counter-motion was made to ratify the fire marshal's determination, and the outcome were the same, that motion wouldn't carry either.
Yeah. You wouldn't need to do that. It's just whether... Your only motion is on the appeals, whether or not it should be overturned.
So, any other discussion or questions or comments? All right. I think we should probably do this one at a time, because otherwise I might mess something up. So, we'll start in the order that is listed on my record sheet, which is alphabetically. So, Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
And I vote aye. Mr. Intini?
Nay.
Mr. LaPerry?
Nay.
Mr. Paulino?
Nay.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Vignette?
Nay.
Okay. Motion fails. Four votes nay, three aye, no abstentions, and we are all still absent.
Present.
Or present, yes. Nobody's absent. We're all here. It's late. Now, the most controversial item on the agenda tonight, 69 Anchor Terrace, offense. This is a type-two action. It's been so long since we had a fence. It seems. All right. It's a type-two action for secret purposes. Does someone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we approve this, based on the fact that she's had it there. It hasn't bothered anybody for a while. It has not an adverse effect on the neighborhood. It won't hurt the characteristic of the neighborhood, no environmental impact on the neighborhood. It is self-created because she put it up 10 years ago, but she did it for a reason, to kind of block out some of the neighbor's stuff.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be here. Before we leave, we have, along with the agenda for tonight and all of the related material, we had drafts of minutes for the meetings of June 2, 2014, July 7, 2014, August 4, 2014, and September 8, 2014, and October 6, 2014. to approve all of the minutes with the exception of July 7, 2014? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
With respect to the July 7 minutes, Mr. LaPerry and Mr. Paulino were not present. I'll move that we approve those. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those also approved with two abstentions. And now, we are adjourned.